Greetings and welcome. I have to say, it's a pleasure to see everybody around this table. It hasn't gotten old yet, and I just look forward to it every week. So, I'm glad we're back. Get right down to it. The first item on the agenda is the preliminary agenda review. Anyone have a chance to take a look at that? Any questions about what's on the consent agenda? Any items that we need to move into?
Just a reminder, the public hearing.
Right, we do have a public hearing next Tuesday, the 22nd, on an amendment to the minor subdivision definitions in the land management code, and also for the APFO.
Thank you.
Requirement.
This person about that.
Right. And Councilmember Alshar, you are responsible for next week's invocation. So, we expect a good one. Any other comments or questions? All right. We'll proceed to our next item on the agenda. We're moving quite along here. Police and Fire Employee Retirement Plan Update. We have Susan Delauter with our Human Resources Department, and John Ketsner, who is the actuary, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. We're going to turn things over to John to go through the presentation that we provided to everyone, and please feel free to ask questions as we go if you have any that come up.
Thanks.
All right, good afternoon. The format of this little PowerPoint is the same as we've used in prior years. It's straightforward. I know some of your folks are new, or at least returned. So, the first couple pages are just sort of setting the stage. My name is John Ketsner. I'm with C-Biz. I am an actuary, and what you have us do every year is review your police and fire employees' retirement plan, the pension plan, from an actuarial standpoint, and then suggest back to you, based on the census and where your plan assets are at that point in time, a recommended level of contribution from the city for your next fiscal period. So, just again, if we start on just slide two here, this is a pension plan that the city established in 1998. These folks were in, the fire and policemen, were in the state plan. Prior to that, the city withdrew from the state plan and started its own retirement plan. So, it's still a relatively young plan, in terms of your commitment to the plan. It is a defined benefit pension plan. That means it's a, it's a plan that operates in a manner very similar to Social Security. When somebody retires, they get a monthly pension that's payable out of a trust fund. That pension is essentially guaranteed for life. They have some different options they can elect under the modes of payment, but it's a pension plan. It is a classic pension plan, and again, like I say, very similar to Social Security. It's not a defined contribution plan, where they get a pot of money and then they live off of that. You send them a check every month as a pension. In terms of how we determine the, our recommended levels of funding, we, you know, we make assumptions about pay increases, long-term investment returns of the trust fund, changes in staff, life expectancies of these folks, and then, of course, a very important part of the benefit is, or the benefit structure is the level of pension that you're promising to people. This plan is governed by a retirement committee, which meets four times a year. They meet with us periodically. They meet with your investment folks, and they, they look after the actual governance of the plan, and then report back to you periodically. Slide three is actually, is the summary of the basic benefit structure of this plan. People can retire with what's called a normal retirement, meaning unreduced, at the later of age 20, I'm sorry, the earlier of age 62, or after the completion of 25 years of service. They can retire even earlier than that with early retirement benefits, which are reduced to reflect the fact that they're going to have longer payout periods. The basic formula is 2% of average pay for each year of service that they provide to the city. They do, can, or can get credit for some military service in the determination of the service that's used for pension purposes. But basically, it's 2% for each year of service, times the highest three years of salary, an average of three years, the highest three years that they earn as a city employee. And 30 years is the maximum years of service they can have for plan purposes. So, if they work for you for 30 years and retire, they get a pension of 60% of their high three-year average salary. So, a very classic final pay, defined benefit pension plan. Okay? So, any questions basically on the function here, or the benefit structure? Yes, sir?
The retirement committee. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know anything about it. Is it, is it people in the city, or is this a?
We have representation from the police, as well as the fire management, as well as union members. We have a citizen on the committee. We have to add a, we have an open position right now for mayor and council. We have to get that filled now, for that representation, and then we have human resources representation on that committee.
These are not the people who do the investing?
No, we work with PNC Bank. We have Chris Little, as John referenced. He comes in and takes care of all the investments for us.
Okay. And with, if someone has decided to work beyond 30 years, 30 years goes by fast these days, does the three year, does that extra time count toward these three years? Or does it stop at the end of 33 years? The salary, it says the salary average, the highest three years preceding date of termination. Now, I guess I don't know what the date of termination is. Is that retirement?
Yes, sir.
So, if somebody worked for 40 years, and they made more money in their 40th year than they made in their 30th year, they would get that benefit in their retirement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. I mean, basically, the notion is that it's going to replace 60% of their pre-retirement income. I mean, that's generally the driving notion there. I mean, it's possible it can go the other way, and they never lose anything, but yes.
Thank you.
Page four is just a summary of the basic demographics of your plan. When we do these actuarial valuations, we do what's called a closed group valuation. In other words, we only look at the folks that are working for you now, or who have already earned a benefit under the plan. We don't try to project or model out future hires in accordance with the GASB standards for how these valuations should be done. It's just looking at your, your group right now. We take literally a photograph on July 1st of each year to measure liabilities, and compare those to available assets, and then, as I say, use that differential to determine a funding suggestion. So, you can see, as of 2012, you had 167 active folks. That's down nine from two years ago. Your retirees are now at 64. That's up two from last year, but you had a number of retirees, you can see, in the last two years. And then vest, by vested, we mean somebody that's left the employ of the city, who's not currently in retirement pay status, but has a benefit due them sometime in the future. Okay? You can see the average age is up a little bit, the average pay of service is up a little bit. So, your group is getting a little older every year, but not by a year. There's people leaving, people coming in. The basic demographic is pretty stable. Page five is a summary of our recommended levels of contribution. You can see for 2012, which will drive your budgeting in the next period, our recommended level of contribution from the city is 12.2%, which is up almost 1% of pay, 12.2% of payroll, covered payroll here, which is up about a percent from last year. The increase is driven primarily because investment performance in the period that, from July 1st '11 to June 30th '12, was under the assumed rate of return of 7 and 3/4%. But also, the pay raises, the assumed level of pay raises was also less than what's assumed, but the differential was still enough to drive cost increase a little bit. Also, you have a level, you have a level, or actually, I think, a drop in the actual payroll here. So, when you, you know, when you look at sort of fixed dollar costs as a percentage of payroll, that also is driving that differential a little bit. When the plan was originally started in 1998, the target overall cost of this plan was 14.9% of pay. It has drifted up now to 19.2% of pay, which is almost a 45% increase, again, primarily because the capital markets have underperformed in that 14-year period, as I'm sure you're aware. It's been a, essentially, a lost decade, or more than a lost decade, from an investment standpoint, which has driven up the costs. The employee share of that cost is 7% of pay, so the, the, you know, the city shares, the one that's gone up, I'm sorry, 45%, the overall cost's gone up about 24% over that period of time. But because you pick up everything that employees don't pay for, your percentage is up about 45% from where it was originally. But again, the main villain, if you were well of all that, is what's happened in the capital markets, as we'll see here in a minute. Your funding status, it dropped off a little bit this year, again, because of investment performance. It's still hovering in that 45% range. That's, that is light compared to other retirement plans, but that's primarily because of how young this plan is. It isn't because of a lack of governance, or a lack of the city making its recommended levels of contributions. It's just, it's just a new plan, and it's going to take a while for that to build up. You had a number of people who came along when the plan started in 1998 with, you know, with a lot of service, who've gone now retired, so, you know, it's, it's just going to be a slow process to get those funding ratios up to where I'm sure you folks would like them to be. If, in fact, the, the, the investment markets had done over the last 14 years what, let's say they've done over the last 20 years, or the last 40 years, your funded percentage would be significantly higher than this. And that's just, again, the reality of the capital markets over that period of time. The next couple pages are the disclosures that you have to put into your financial statements with respect to this plan. You can see your actual payroll, the covered payroll here is, you know, is down significantly from where it was just a couple of years ago. So, the, the actual covered group, in terms of payroll, is, is down. That has an impact in terms of making those costs as a percentage of payroll look a little bit higher than they'd otherwise be, because you have fixed cost in there, which is a percentage of that number are going to go up. You can see on the, on page eight, you know, the city's contribution last year in terms of cash, June to June, was a little over, was almost 1.1 million. Again, that's down a little bit from the prior periods, again, primarily because payroll's down. Same thing with the employee contributions. And you can see your investment return for that period was just a little over $400,000 compared to what was a very nice 2.8 million the year before. So, that's, you know, that's the way it works. I'm assuming that the, the fund is, is probably up since June 30th. I don't know if Chris has reported back to you recently about that, but generally, these funds are up since, since June 30th. Page nine is a summary of the actual investment return. And again, when we measure these investment returns, we measure them after all fees that are paid by the plan. There are fees paid for, not only for money management, but legal fees, actuarial fees, administrative fees, that all come out of this pot. And when we look at investment returns, we, we take those out of there. And they run anywhere from 70 basis points to 1%, depending on, you know, primarily depending on your associated legal costs in any one year. So, your 13 average rate of return since the plan's inception is about 3.4%. In terms of just comparing that to an index, it's probably, I'd say, more like 4.4%, 4.3% because, again, we've taken out fees when we measure investment returns. You were hoping, obviously, for something to look more like 7.5% to 8% over that period of time, and again, it's that miss compounded over all those years. It's created a big part of that increase in our recommended levels of contribution. Yes, sir?
How does, if you know, how does that compare with the state plan?
I don't know. I mean, I can get that, my understanding is the state was like about 0.6, but I, you know.
On the impression we were.
Yeah, for June 30th. So, you're probably 1% better than the state, but I can get that.
What, what investments are permitted to be made under this plan? I mean, I assume equities, real estate?
Yeah, you can have real estate, I mean, certainly, like, real estate investment trusts and things like that. I don't know offhand whether you have any real estate exposure in there. It's only, you know, whatever it is, $18 million, so I, you know, it's not big enough to be getting into exotic investments.
Yeah.
The PNC runs it. I think they're just generally using, you know, ETFs and mutual funds to get you some diversification. But.
Okay, thank you.
We do have an investment policy for this, for this plan, that if you would need to see that, we'll be glad to share that. But we do review that on an annual basis to make sure we're keeping in line with, you know, what PNC recommends.
Thank you. 10, on slide 10, we're showing you how you're currently allocated, just broadly within, between fixed income and equities and cash. You can see you, you look pretty much like a 70-30 portfolio. You hang around there. That is, I'm sure, consistent with your investment policy. And just looking at, you know, a 70-30 fund that was invested in Standard and Poor's and a equivalent fixed income index, that, that return would have been about 6% this year. So, your particular return, again, if we add back, let's say, another percent to your return, it was a little bit less than what the indices would have indicated for the period ending June 30th of 2012, but I think you were up about that much in 2011. So, so, part of it depends on what PNC is doing, how they're allocating inside of those broad asset classes. And again, Chris from PNC reports to the, to the retirement committee, and presumably is report, you know, is dealing with these differentials one way or the other. I think over, over the long course of your plan, you're totally consistent with, with what you would expect, given your asset allocation, your investment policy. I don't think there's any big variance there. Slide 11, we are facing new accounting standards coming down the pike for government-sponsored retirement plans. These will come online really next year, start influencing your approach to how you report these liabilities and whatnot to the public, or to anybody that's interested in your financials. The primary, the primary driver behind these new accounting rules is to put all sort of governmental agencies on the same basis with respect to reporting these things. It is not to give you a better proxy for determining funding policy. They make very clear in their preamble that these new rules are for accounting purposes, and they don't believe that they are appropriate for funding purposes. So, we will be presumably working with you and with the pension committee to develop a funding policy that is just like your investment policy, that is, that is probably going to be different than what you're going to be reporting for accounting purposes. Here to fore, the accounting rules and the approach to the accounting determinations were a fairly decent proxy for a funding policy, but, but going forward, there's going to be a disconnect, just like there is in the private sector. Okay? So, we will be picking that up and reviewing that over the next year or two with, with your financial people, and coming back to you with suggestions on how you should, you know, how we think you ought to be approaching this issue, this change in accounting that's going to be applicable to you as a plan sponsor.
Let me, I'm sorry. I apologize for asking so many questions, but this is a federal mandate, right? This GASB thing's a federal mandate.
No, 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 it's an accounting mandate. So, GASB is, the feds actually have very little influence over your plans. What, what GASB is saying is if you sponsor, if you're promising these benefits to folks, we want you to report in accordance with their standards, your liabilities, your assets, your net periodic expense, as they would measure it. What's happened in the past is that every plan sponsor out there had a, theoretically could have a somewhat different approach to how they, you know, how they report these liabilities and how they're funding their plan.
Right.
And it was difficult for, in theory, for the public to read different financial statements of different plan sponsors. The idea here now is to get everybody essentially working on the same basis with respect to the methodology of, of reporting these things. And, and that's GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, which is, you know, government GAAP standards.
But it's not a government board. It's an accounting standards board that reports on governmental.
Right. There's still a mandate.
Who suggests for purposes of, well, the, if you're going to have, if you're going to have certified statements coming from your, your auditor, then you're, they're going to want to make sure you're reporting these liabilities in accordance with GASB standards, and that's what's changed.
But it's a mandate of the auditing boards.
Right.
The private sector, the professional auditing boards, not the government.
Well, I, I understand that. It's just that there's a very basic difference between governments and private places. Governments generally don't stop. Private places go out of business.
Right, right.
And so, you.
And also, the retirement plans are, are treated, even still, under the new rules, as a separate agency from the government themselves. However, under these new standards, your unfunded liabilities are going to be reported now on the city's balance sheet as liability, just like they are in the private sector. That's, that's clearly a fundamental difference, is that the governments are anticipated to be around forever, private sector plans are not. But also, private sector plans are insured by the federal government, so they take a very keen interest in the funding, and they have very accelerated funding rules, primarily because they're insuring these things, and they don't want to get stuck.
Right.
Holding the bag, as they have in many famous instances, like airlines and steel companies and, thank you, some other. Again, you're not, you're not going to see a big difference in the basic approach to, to our, what we do with respect to these new accounting rules. They're just going to be mixed up in a different way. We do believe that you're going to want to, you know, again, collectively come together and, and come up with a funding policy, and not just be relying on the numbers that we're, the numbers that we report to you and suggest to you as a funding policy are also being used for accounting purposes right now. And that's where there's going to be a disconnect going forward, that the accounting rules, again, are not going to be, in our opinion, and in GASB's opinion, not a good substitute for a long-term funding policy. Okay, why don't we go to, just to slide 13. Again, these, these conclusions, I think, I've touched on. Again, the plan is, is relatively immature, and you have had the bad luck of starting your plan and running your plan over a 14-year period when the capital markets were not very accommodating. Our recommended level of contribution is still, you know, 11% to 12% of pay going forward, and we, you know, hopefully, we'll start getting some recurring years of good investment returns. In the meantime, again, you're not giving anticipated levels of pay increases, so that tends to balance out the effect of, of, of the investment returns not being there too, but it doesn't totally offset it.
John, on that point, just because we'll be getting into the budget more later this month, and then in the spring with the mayor and council, would you say the three determinants on our contribution level from the city would be the payroll amount, whether we give a pay increase, whether we increase the number of staff covered by the pension, and then the investment returns or those?
Right, they're the, they're the primary drivers.
So, just as the mayor and council's thinking about this from a budgetary standpoint.
Right, the other one, and you'll see on my recommendations on slide 14, the other one is benefit structure, the basic benefits that are promised under the plan. Again, our recommendation certainly remains, as it has for the last several years, that you not tweak that in any, any material way. You have granted some relief on the, on the military service side over the last couple of years, which, you know, gave, gave some folks some additional years of service, but in terms of things like the multiplier, the benefit multiplier, cost of living adjustments, we don't think the plan is, you know, in a great spot right now to be considering those things. But that, you know, that's up to you. But clearly, the driver is payroll. And, you know, you can add folks to the payroll if they're, if they're sort of younger people, then that actually helps. It's like any other insurance program. But this, this kind of plan is, is essentially a group insured retirement plan. So, so, the extent that you, you know, you start making the group younger, that actually helps the long-term plan cost. But, yeah, but in terms of raw dollars, yeah, the higher the payroll, the higher the associated cost. It's just like your FICA, this is a, this is a salary-related expense. So, you increase your covered payroll, you're going to increase this particular cost.
And then you're here as the actuary for the police and fire pension, which is our, our fund, or our pension program. The state gives us the cost assessments for us on the state pension plan, which would represent for us our non-police and fire.
Right, and that's pretty much, here's the bill paid. Again, it's not unlike.
A little bit different scenario.
Your FICA tax, right, and, right. So, but this one is one you control. In theory, you control, you know, you control the benefit structure, you control who's covered by it, you control really the level of contribution you're going to make, but at the end of the day, you do have an audience that's looking at this, and will continue to look at it and, you know, make their own determinations about how, how well you're governing this plan. Again, getting back to my recommendations, again, we're, we don't think you should be thinking about improving the benefit structure. You should continue to monitor the investment returns, obviously. And again, our, our observation, I've made this the last several years, is that, that the governance of this plan is, is compliant to UMPERSA, which is a, is a set of standards that's been adopted by only a couple of states, Maryland being one of them, but essentially, it's a NARISA-like standard of how you're governing your plan. And again, from our observation, you are compliant with UMPERSA. Okay, so that's basically where we are. Again, we, there is a slight increase in your, I mean, I mean, there's an increase in your recommended level of funding, about 1% of payroll, again, primarily driven by the capital markets and the, and the weak performance, the continued weak performance of those.
Please.
Okay, I have a number of questions, some of which are questions continued from prior years, but the, I've always been concerned about the funded status, which, you know, part of not growing as fast is, are, and that plays into a larger question. Is that, by the fact that it's not pacing where we wanted it to be, can we be caught up in a surprise with, let's say, a consistent market downturn? Are we at risk for a major surprise in, in upcoming years, or what might trigger a, a major surprise? And then, you know, with us not being as, as well-funded as some older. And then, you know, with us not being as well-funded as some older plans that have had longer times, are we at risk in any way of?
Well, I mean, you're obviously at risk of a major, if you really took a big hit to those investments in any one year. And if that's, you know, if that's a concern, then you need to chat that up with PNC and have them get more defensive, if that's what you want them to be with respect to the investments. What was interesting about this, about this change in the accounting rules, is that in the private sector, when we do these liability measurements,
Right.
we have to do it using bond rates. We have to measure these things against the long-term rate of return of bonds, which, as you know, are very low these days, which drive those liability calculations up. When Gatsby issued these revised accounting rules, they stuck to the, they stuck to the notion of measuring these liabilities against the long-term, you know, a reasonable long-term rate of return of your pension assets in a blended portfolio of stocks and bonds. And, you know, again, if you look back 20 years, 20 years, on a 70-30 basis, you're going to see something that looks like 8 percent. You look back 40 years on that basis, you're going to look at something that looks like 8 and 1/2 percent. So, the question is, has the paradigm changed long-term in terms of capital markets? And, you know, you get discussions all over the board about that. I was in Kansas, meeting like this a week ago, and they were very defensive about 8 and 1/2 percent and staying with 8 and 1/2 percent, that they thought that was a perfectly reasonable long-term rate of return. So, you have those conversations going on.
Well, that's sort of the flip side of using the bond rates.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
That's the flip side of that.
But the accounting, the accounting profession looked at, in the, when FASB looked at it on the private sector, they were very insistent, bonds, you know, you have to assume that the only thing you're invested in are investment-grade bonds, not even junk bonds, investment-grade bonds from this point forward to measure those liabilities, which are, you know, current interest rates create huge liability calculations.
So, do you think we're, with the ups and downs, I think it was around 38 or 40 percent when I came on the council, we're up to around 46 percent. Do you think that's an adequate pace of going towards funded status?
We'd clearly like to see you do better, but again, you're overcoming a lot in terms of, you started the plan essentially fresh. You came in and significantly increased the benefit multiplier from what it was in the state, and then you had a lot of folks retire who were taking money out of the plan, you know, almost as fast as you can put money into the plan. So, you have, you've had a lot of drag on jump-starting that funding policy. The real question is, is, has, you know, bond underwriting folks look at your financials and look and try to determine where to, you know, your bond rating be? Are they, are they wise enough and clever enough to look through your numbers and get to that point? And, you know, maybe occasionally they, you might need to remind them of that if they're talking about your pension funding liability percentage, that, and, you know, implying that somehow that speaks to the credit worthiness of the city, that you ought to, somebody ought to be reminding them that it's a, you know, it's a fairly new plan and all these things that I just mentioned were going on.
Right. And getting back to Gatsby, does that entail, do you think their establishment of policies involve anything that might be, put us at risk of a major, needing to put a major input into this program?
I don't think so. Not Standard and Poor's, but one of the, one of the, the rating agencies recently after Gatsby issued that, put out, you know, for purposes of transparency, showed how they're going to take these new Gatsby numbers and recast them to, as they consider the creditworthiness of different bond issuers. Pardon?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there was this long, long memo, but like item 13 in all of this was that they did not anticipate that this was going to cause much change in anybody's, you know, bond, creditworthiness, their rating for them. And that's because they've been doing it all along. They're just, are now going to look through it in a different way, but get to the same conclusion. So, again, these analysts know how to read these things and know what to look at and can appropriately deconstruct them. They're going to, they're going to take it back to a bond. If you read there what they're going to do, they're going to take it back to an equivalent bond rating. But again, they've been doing this all along anyway, and, you know, I think what was, and that's what they should say. I mean, they, you know, they shouldn't be suddenly changing your, your bond rating because there's been a change in accounting rules. The numbers, the basic numbers have been out there forever. So, I don't, you know, we don't anticipate that there's going to be any big impact to you in terms of, say, your ability to borrow money or what you have to pay to borrow money because of this pension plan. But, you know, again, we, I think we all need to take this opportunity to get back to having, you know, an open discussion about funding policies.
Well, it's the rating, or are we going to face all of a sudden some year, oop, you have to put it in? And let's say the market's relatively stable, but their standards change, we're going to put 400,000 or 500,000 more of our own money into it or something like that. That's, I was much concerned about that. The rating agencies, yeah, they can get arcane, but...
Well, you have plenty of money to pay benefits if it came to it for several years with that, you know. Part of these new accounting standards are going to be, we have to go through what's called a depletion analysis of your plan every year, which means that we're supposed to be taking your investment policy and your funding policy, looking at projected benefits, and looking to see if the plan is looking to run out of money in the near, you know,
Right.
cash. So, that's going to be part of the process too. Right now, you would have many years where you'd be able to make benefit payments, even if the city was to skip contributions. Don't do that, because that's going to have other consequences.
And then just finally, a technical thing that I can't remember. What is our, you mentioned COLAs, what is the retiree COLA?
There is none.
There's none? Okay, that's what I remember.
Right.
It's a stabilized fixed payout.
Right. And back when the plan was started, there was much discussion about COLAs, and the decision was made collectively, at least from my point of view, to come in with a higher multiplier on the front end and to forego COLAs.
Okay, so there was a trade-off on that?
Right.
Any other questions from council members, comments?
I just have a couple of points, and, you know, I read your recommendations section on the last page, and to me, it reads a bit more like observations.
Right.
And when you go through the document, and I think this speaks to the issue of the new Gatsby regulations of looking a little deeper into the retirement plans for governmental entities, very similar to how the, you know, the financial industry looked into the stability of the banks should asset management crash. And so, when you look at these, some of the observations I would offer are, like page three, where it talks about those plan provisions and the normal early and 30-year sort of retirement scenarios. And I think one thing that would be important to go back and look at is to determine sort of what we expected to occur under those three scenarios and what is actually occurring. In other words, you know, whether folks are, you know, taking the 20 years versus the 25 years versus the 30 years. And if you look at page five, it talks about contribution recommendations. I think a question that this body, and the city frankly, needs to ask itself is, in its funding policy, you know, if there is a ceiling. If there is not, you know, and our expectation was 7.9 percent, and we come away, you know, seven years from now, and because of returns, we're now at, you know, 18 percent, at some point, you have to ask yourself if 18 percent is feasible. So, for me, that would be recommendation number two in terms of an evaluation. Moving on to page seven, I think speaks to Marty's point. It's the third recommendation I would make, is you look at the pension benefit obligation, and it has tripled in the duration of this fund, and clearly, in part, it's because it is a young fund. But I think one of the recommendations there would be to set a policy or goal in determining where we should be, much like other jurisdictions do, to ensure that, you know, 10 years from now, we're not at 47 percent, but we're at some goal of, you know, 60 percent. Because I think that has an impact on our ability to finance other obligations, and in terms of, you know, how we plan on spending money, frankly, on other things. And I think to your point, what type of increases in compensation employees may expect, which I think goes back to page five and that percent of payroll, because, you know, taking out of one is going to, you know, is going to have an impact on your affordability of the other.
That's exactly right. That's...
So, I get that point very clearly. Page nine, I think is one of the most telling, because if you look at this plan, as young as it is, it's 15 years in, and I think it's important to point out that nine out of those 15 years, or almost two-thirds of that period, our expectation of 7.9 percent has not been met. In fact, six of those 15 years, it has been less than half of the 7.9 percent we expected.
7.75, right.
And I think that, that I think that gets to that question of, you know, if 7.9 percent is, you know, a reasonable factor to include, and you can see here the volatility of the market, you know, is ever-changing on that. I mean, you have an article just in today's paper about, you know, the bond agencies getting to rerate, you know, now the US upcoming. So, I think that has an effect, you know, on the overall solvency. The other recommendation that I would have is if you go to page 10, and I think this speaks to your issue of, you know, how long can you afford to pay before you run yourself into trouble? And this is a question that I had, is under cash, in your plan assets, you have listed 2.6 percent. I'm assuming what that means is you have, in your cash valuation, your ability to just fund today, is it 2.6 percent? That's the percent of what you have available to you to expend, if you were to have to basically pay that out.
That's the percentage of your portfolio on June 30th.
If you had, right, if you had to meet that obligation in a single day, that's the percentage.
Well, that's how much you have literally in a cash, Mary Lee probably would pay pensioners.
And all I'm saying is, if cash is an integral, and an increasingly integral part of that portfolio, I think one of the recommendations I would have is that we set some goal to increase that as a percentage of the overall asset plan. You know, to say, 10 years from now, our expectation is, we want that to be 10 percent, and set a goal, you know, to that effect and accomplishing it. So, and, and for me, that, I think that's all the recommendations I have. But for me, that's a manner in which this body can set for future bodies those goals that we want to achieve, so that the plan remains as solvent as possible in meeting those new regulations and employees understand clearly, you know, why you're trying to achieve those goals for the long-term stability and health of, you know, what essentially is their plan.
I agree with all that. And I think the new accounting rules, one of the drivers there is that, you know, that you look at those funding percentages, because they're going to be out there, they're going to be part of your balance sheet, and that the notion is that because of that, you are going to be funding towards some kind of targeted level of funding.
Yeah, and I would like to set, you know, measurable targets for each of those criteria in which we plan to sort of measure ourselves by.
But again, if the investment markets aren't getting it for you, then you've got to write a check to do it. So, that's, there's only, there's three sources of money for these promises. One is the investment return, second one is employee contributions, and the third one is, which is the makeup, is the city. The city, the city does whatever the other two aren't able to do. And that's, you know, that's, you know, that's part of what goes along with being a sponsor of a defined benefit pension plan. But at the end of the day, you know, if you have to take money out of compensation to move into pension contributions, it does, it does lower your ability to give pay raises. And these are pensions that are driven by, you know, by pay, so it has a rough form of balancing over the long haul.
Mr. Chair? I just want to clarify with Councilmember Elshire. Are you referring that back to the pension committee, just in terms of how we get that back to the mayor and council?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it matters to me in terms of who reviews it to come up with those recommendations for targets. All I'm saying is I think for each one of those items, we should establish a target, and if the pension committee is the entity, the appropriate entity to put that, you know, in the court of and say, hey, you know, here are, here are five or six things, you know, we'd like some evaluation and a 10-year target for you to develop, you know, then that's the appropriate entity that it goes to, and they come back and say, okay, here's what we feel we can reasonably meet. I mean, if we set ourselves up for 50 percent cash, I mean, we're shooting ourselves in the foot out of the gate, because that's just not a reasonable, you know, accomplishment.
Does that make sense, Susan and John, you to refer back to the committee?
Yeah, I think, I think what you're talking about here is, again, you're going to be having a discussion about funding policy anyway, because the, again, these rules are going to force you to rethink your approach to funding. And the second thing is the investment policy. You know, if you, if you want to be more defensive, if you want to be, you know, concerned about, you know, say, the equity market's falling off the cliff and driving down those percentages, then that's, you work through your investment folks to come up with a policy that's consistent with your, you know, your risk levels, what you can, you know, how risk adverse you are, or your risk tolerance in terms of how, how much of this kind of enterprise risk you want to subject the city to. Perfectly legitimate, perfectly common conversations to have, typically through the pension committee or retirement committee.
So, that's the consensus? Well, the staff would work with the committee to get them focused on those requests. Michelle's coming forward.
Hi. The city currently does have an investment policy related to these, so it's probably something we need to revise. It's actually on page 42 of the CAFER document that you have there.
But I think that that policy doesn't include those specific target figures.
It has target figures in here, we just probably need to review them and revise them.
Right, I mean, in terms of cash as a percentage of the total of your asset plan?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
It's on page 42.
Well, we can, we can come back.
We'll review them, and it's 3 percent is our target. And right now, it's a, target is 3 percent, the range is 0 to 10 percent.
Right.
So, it's something that we need to take a look at, and we'll revise it with the pension committee.
Right, that range is those goals that I'd like to set and say, you know, here's the figure we want to be at in a specific period of time.
Right. We'll take a look at those with the pension committee, but we do currently have a policy. I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out.
Thank you. Suppose Standard and Poor's decides to scrap number 13. What kind of liabilities will that create?
Well, I, it depends. It would just flow into your, you know, them determining a rating for the city, for its bonds, and, you know, that would, you'd have the associated cost increase, if you will, in borrowing. But having said that, if they're changing the rules for you, they're changing the rules for everybody. So, you know, and a lot of this comes down to where you are relatively speaking to everybody else, so you probably wouldn't move very far off of that. Again, it's not, it's not healthy for Standard and Poor's to be, you know, to be saying you're double A this year and you're B minus next year because of a change in accounting rules. It's causing the question their credibility, that something like that, you know, something that had nothing to do with you would change your bond rating that much. So, that's why I don't think you'll, you'll be seeing much in the way of a change in anybody's relative bond rating, because it would undermine the credibility of those rating agencies.
Good point. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, or guests? Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation and your suggestions. Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation and your suggestions. Next item on our agenda is the Fiscal Year Twelve Comprehensive Annual Financial Report with our esteemed financial, Finance Director and Representative from SB and Company. Take it away.
I'm just going to kick things off standing up here so that I can do some quick introductions and then get the PowerPoint changed over to their PowerPoint slides here in a few minutes. As you just said, we are here to present the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year Twelve. It's for the fiscal year that recently ended on June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. Have a brief agenda here on the second page of your PowerPoint. For introductions, I'd like to introduce Bill Seymour. He's a CPA with SB and Company, our independent auditor. Cecilia Mo, she's also with SB and Company. I'd like to acknowledge a couple of staff members. First of all, Department of Finance pulled together to make sure that we were able to complete the audit as well as the financial statements. Two employees in particular, Michelle Hepburn and Raina Rose, if you could raise your hands, from the Finance Department, were very instrumental and dedicated. A lot of their time to helping us get the financial statements prepared. Next, I'm going to turn it over to SB and Company for their comments. And then, once they're finished, I have a few slides to go over some financial information actually contained in the CAFER document.
Good evening, everyone. We'll pull it up on the screen, but it also, in the books in front of you, represents our required communications under generally accepted auditing standards as well as other observations that we have. I was going to go through this presentation fairly high-level. Please feel free anytime to stop me with any questions that you may have. Starting on page three is our scope of services. We are engaged to perform, and we did perform, an audit of the June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve financial statements as well as performance of the OMB Circular A-133 Single Audit, which is a federal grant compliance audit. We also reviewed the Uniform Financial Report, which is a, basically takes your financial statements and puts in a form and substance for the Department of Legislative Services for the state of Maryland, as well as a data collection form, which is the reporting mechanism for the single audit, as well as working with management on a year-round basis as accounting issues come up. The results of the audit were, we issued an unqualified or clean opinion on the financial statements that effectively says that your financial statements are reasonably free of material misstatement. We noted no material weaknesses in internal controls. We had no findings in regards to the OMB Circular A-133 Single Audit. We did not discover any instances of fraud, and we received the full cooperation of management. On page four, excuse me, is a pictorial of our risk-based audit approach. The idea here is we spend time understanding what the risks of material misstatement are, what management has in place to mitigate that risk. We test through the process and then perform various substantive procedures as well as other gas-required items that we do, ultimately to be able to provide that reasonable assurance. On page five, we first assess the control environment, if you will, the tone at the top. We use the COSO model of the interrelated components of internal control of being the underlying control environment, management's risk assessment, the specific control activities, monitoring, and then how information and communication surrounds the entire process. In all areas, our assessment was effective. On page six, goes through the underlying key processes and functions, both what we looked at the design and the operation of those internal controls as they relate to financial statement preparation. In all cases, our assessment was effective. On pages seven and eight are summary-level financial statements. I know Michelle's going to speak briefly about the financials, the specific numbers. We have nothing in particular that we need to bring to your attention within, within the numbers. On page nine is the Single Audit, or OMB Circular A-133 Audit Results. During the year, the city spent just over four million dollars' worth of federal funds. We were required, and we did perform testing, over, just over two point seven million dollars of those, roughly covering about sixty-seven percent. Once again, we issued unqualified opinions with no findings and that the city does qualify for a low-risk audit status. On page ten is a high-level industry update. We'll dovetail on some items, some conversation that occurred with the actuary. First, in July of last year, the SEC issued a report on municipal securities for those state and local governments that use public markets to fund bonds and their desire, that is the SEC, to have Exchange Act of nineteen thirty-three and thirty-four authority over those governments. Effectively, you know, when Microsoft, you know, having public stock has to be in requirements with the SEC, the SEC wants similar level authority over state and local governments. The SEC has wanted this authority for some time, but until recently, never really has had a case for it. Unfortunately, with the number of governmental bankruptcies that have occurred over the last couple of years, the city of Harrisburg, just to our north, Jefferson County down in Alabama being the largest one, then a number of cities and towns across the state of California. Unfortunately, the SEC has published this paper, and there is actually movement in Congress currently to potentially give them this authority, which would really change the dynamic of the financial reporting structure that state and local governments who choose to issue public debt would be there. There would, you know, if you look at the timing of the statements, you know, we issued these statements the end of October. The Governmental Finance Officers Association, which you've received the award now for how many years? For fifteen years, has set an industry standard of having the statements done within six months after year-end. So if you get your statements to GFOA by six months, you're eligible for this award. Well, the city's got these statements done by the end of October. Well, the SEC still believes that that information is now stale. It's too late. Governmental, I mean, public entities who issue stock actually have to issue their statements within forty-five days of year-end, which really would be a game changer for the state and local government, as well as looking at the different underlying accounting. At this time, there's been no movement on that from Congress. However, it is out there and as a possibility. The next item deals with accounting for pensions and that unfunded actuarial liability. Roughly, in the June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve statements, that number of an unfunded was roughly about twenty million dollars. Under the new standards, that twenty million dollars would be recorded as a liability only on your entity-wide financial statements. It would not affect your fund-level statements. As well as, there's a number of different disclosures and clarifications that would occur. There is specific items around the different actuarial methods that you would be allowed to use for financial reporting purposes. There was a different method of calculating the discount rate, which is a single discount rate that's bifurcated between a long-term investment return as well as the, what is the underlying borrowing rate that the city would have depending upon how much of that plan is funded versus unfunded. So effectively, you'll take your discount rate and you will make it smaller, which in turn will make that unfunded liability larger. And going from there, so, you know, that twenty million dollars could go to twenty-five or thirty million dollars depending upon what that actuarial analysis is. Now, keeping in mind that, you know, to give it some breadth, well, that's a lot of, lot of money. The government-wide financial statements as a whole, you have just, just over two hundred, or just shy of two hundred and forty-six million dollars in total net assets. So if we were, if we were to use the numbers that we currently have, that would reduce those by twenty million dollars, which, once again, a lot of money. But keeping in mind that there's a number of governmental entities that, upon application of this, will actually make their governmental, their net assets on entity-wide basis go into a deficit. The one item that's not addressed as part of this, these new standards is the recording of the other post-employment benefit unfunded liability. Currently, that's still in footnote disclosure, as the, that twenty million dollars I was talking about earlier with the pensions is a footnote disclosure. You know, why Gatsby did not tackle both at the same time? I don't understand because they're similar liabilities while, you know, covering different items. That will have a much more profound effect on state and local government financial reporting. You know, while you have a young plan that's, you know, forty to fifty percent funded currently, there's, you know, there's a lot of plans that are out there that are, you know, in that sixty to eighty to eighty-five percent funded level. So when you talk about that liability that you're booking, you're only booking a portion of the total liability because for the most part, it's, you know, it's majority of the funded in today's dollars. However, OPEB, you know, OPEB came at the exact worst time for state and local governments. When it was implemented, it was right when we had the effects of the recession. So there was no chance, if you will, to ever create adequate funding. And what ends up happening is the annual required contribution isn't funded, so you're not putting any money away for a future liability that is a much larger liability than what the pensions are. So to that effect, you know, currently, the unfunded liability for OPEB for the city is roughly thirty, around thirty million dollars. So right off the top, if you look at it, we're already worse off. And that has not occurred at this, at this point, but we are expecting that Gatsby would move in that direction to record that as a liability as well. Additionally, with the, with the cost-sharing plan with the state and Maryland retirement system, under Gatsby sixty-seven, there will be a requirement that you record your proportionate share of that unfunded liability. Currently, the way that the accounting works is that when you, you know, the state or the state retirement system basically sends you a bill that says, here's, you know, you've got to contribute X dollars. As long as you contribute X dollars, under the current accounting, you have no liability. Because if you think about it, really, it's the state retirement's responsibility to manage the funds to make sure that you have that, you have enough cash or enough investments to fund that future liability. Well, under the new standard, what they want to do is make sure that every government is showing its proportionate share of what that actual unfunded liability is. So the generally accepted item that is looked at currently to come up with that calculation is going to be based upon what an entity's contributions are to the current unfunded status of that plan. Now, with the municipal portion of the plan, this is not nearly as bad as the state teachers' retirement system plan because for a number of years, you know, the state has basically said, you guys got to pay us and, you know, through, you know, making sure that they've gotten their money. Whereas the teachers' retirement plan was, you know, originally funded by the state, they made decisions not to fully fund that annual required contribution, which now has not only given us a actuarial unfunded liability, but an actual unfunded liability because we haven't met those markers for payment. And then with the accounting, the way it's currently written under sixty-seven, this new sixty-seven, when that full shift of, of the funding goes to the school, the teacher or the, the school boards, that proportionate share of the liability, the way it's currently written, and I want to stress that Gatsby's still looking at this because of the, some of the uniquenesses of different cost-sharing plans. Currently, the way it's written, that that portion of liability would also go to the, to the school boards, which then, of course, would then be swallowed up by the counties, which then, of course, would then make there potentially be less money for cities for different programs that are there. The other item Gatsby's looking at is a, there's an exposure draft on economic conditions reporting. This is also as a result of some of the bankruptcies where, you know, currently, the financial reporting model is historic. You know, we present your financial statements as of a date for that, so we're looking historically. And we don't allow for a lot of reporting that is in the future. Other than, you know, the, some of the MDNA disclosures about future economic conditions, there is a current exposure draft that will drive, that you actually will take the current facts and circumstances that you have today, and then you will project, project those out for a number of years, five to ten years. So you would be able to say, based upon, you know, things that we know today, what is the city going to look like financially five to ten years from now? Now, in textbook form, this makes all the sense in the world because you say, hey, yeah, if I know this, I should know that, that. You know, now, of course, anytime that you're doing projections, it's fraught with interpretations. And they're working through a number of different items to go and set what the reporting will be with that. To give you an example of what drove this, or one of the items that drove this, you know, the city of Harrisburg, when they built that huge incinerator, in some ways, you knew at that point that there wasn't going to be enough revenue to support the debt service. But the accounting and the financial reporting model, we, there was no obligation, there was no requirement to report that because that was a future item. So until such time that you actually tripped that point, there is nothing to report. Well, under this, under this new standard, if they, when they do pass it, I should say, the idea would be, wait a minute, you know today that that potentially is going to be a problem. It would be disclosed as required supplementary information to the financial statements. More likely than not, it will not be audited as we can't, per se, it's very difficult to audit something that hasn't happened yet. But it would be a required disclosure within the financial statements. Lastly, you know, as a result of the economy, you know, we continue to stress the awareness of fraud. You know, our audit is not a fraud audit. A fraud audit would be different in scope. We are required to maintain a healthy skepticism for fraud, look for fraud in what we're testing. But, you know, we're not required to find all instances of fraud. I can report to you in our testing and discussions, we noted no instances of fraud. On page eleven is just a high-level summary of some of the upcoming Gaspys. The, the booking of this liability for unfunded pension will be, will show up in your June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen financial statements. There's a number of items before that which we don't believe will have a material effect on your financial statements. Pages twelve through the remainder of the book is our specific required communications. This is our, our chance to talk to you about if we had lots of issues getting through the audit, if we had, you know, accounting that was just barely acceptable, whether that's ultra-conservative or ultra-aggressive, whether we had disagreements with management, whether we had audit adjustments and noted the fraud, you know, whether we had material weaknesses. In all those cases, we had none of those items. Management was extremely helpful in getting through the financial statements, getting us the items that we need, answering our questions. We had no disagreements. We had no serious difficulties. We had really no kind of, what we would term, negative items that we would need to disclose in the, in the financial statement audit. I know I kind of went high-level through that. I don't know if there's any specific questions that were there that we can address. Yes, sir.
Well, rather than a specific question, it's a question similar to what I asked the earlier gentleman. You outlined a number of things coming down the road. I didn't hear dollar sign implications. Are there major dollar sign implications or potential that we ought to know about, that I'm sure you're keeping, Michelle, brief, that we ought to be aware of as well? Especially if we're considering, you know, we do a good job. We have a five-year financial operating budget projection and, which is all well and good. But if there's a blip in there that isn't provided for, then we're assuming one set of bottom lines with that blip looming out there, so.
Well, I, I think at a city level, there's nothing that would be a, you know, huge item with the exception of this SEC item because the effect of that is somewhat unknown. If you look at the staffing of what, from a finance perspective, of what is there, I believe that there is nine people in finance currently. If you look at eight or nine, that, you know, I could tell you that that would not be sufficient to keep up with the SEC. There would be a number of additional personnel that would be needed. But I don't know if that's a material number from a city perspective. You know, the recording of this liability for pensions, you know, is somewhat of a, an accounting requirement. As the gentleman had mentioned earlier, it, Gatsby's not in the business of deciding what you should fund. I mean, that's your ultimate decision. You can put zero into the, you know, as a funding model, and all we would. and all we would do is have reported it as a liability. Um, if you look at the statements, you know, yours roughly about fifteen million dollars worth of assets, and you had about two million dollars worth of benefit payments in two thousand twelve. So, you know, you have seven and a half years considering a constant model going forward of, you know, if you said you had no more contributions and you had no investment gains that were to occur. Um, so from that perspective, my, my answer would be no. However, uh, we are in somewhat uncertain times. And as the state deals with a lot of their fiscal issues, you know, sequestration, if fiscal cliff, um, you know, the, the, if you look at it, you know, I think we had said you had just about four million dollars worth of, uh, federal funds. You know, I don't, you know, I'm not aware of any of those potentially going away as a result of sequestration. But to the extent that, you know, you can potentially, you know, defense, I believe, has a lot of cuts, which then, of course, could then cut, you know, people with jobs in the area, which then, of course, cuts your income tax, which, uh, causes a number of issues. So from that perspective, there's some environmental items that I would say, but there's nothing that I can say, here's a number, here's what you gotta look out for.
Um, do you guys comment on adequacy of fund balance and the proportional, uh, uh, set of sides and so forth for fund balance?
No, uh, not, because that's a management decision as to what you believe the adequacy of that is. We are required to look as part of our audit to, uh, for the concept of what's going concern, which is basically us saying that we don't believe that you're going to go out of business or go bankrupt, which when we issue an unqualified opinion, we're effectively saying that there are no indices that that would occur, uh, for a period of one year from the date of our, um, from the date of your financial statements. We typically say that, you know, get us to that when we believe the next audit would occur, and we don't believe that that would, that would be the case.
An adequate fund balance, I think, is even more important with all the uncertainties out there.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, but from the standpoint of what, what that right number is, um, you know, that's a facts and circumstance item that, you know, you can't even go from one city to the next because your needs are different from other cities. And depending upon what are the natures of the services that you want to provide and that level of funding that goes along with that.
But, but I presume you look and say, that's a fair determination of fund balance.
From a, from a...
You can get into arguments about what's in fund balance and what's not.
Right, no, what we say is what is in fund balance? Is it fund balance from a financial reporting? But whether that is, you know, if you make the decision to, you know, as, as an example, you can make the decision to completely exhaust all of your fund balance and fund pension. Well, we would say that your fund balance would be zero in that case, and you would have assets in your pension. That's not wrong, that's your decision. Uh, you know, from a practical matter, I don't think that you would do that. And if you did, I'd ask, you know, behind closed doors, I'd say, okay, don't understand the thought process. But, you know, from a management decision process, we can't get into saying, well, we would have done something different because then that moves us from being an independent perspective of the, uh, financial statements to now saying that we are potentially advising management on what to do with their funds.
You, you're very knowledgeable, thank you.
Thank you.
O P A D. What was, what did you say our O P A D liability is?
The unfunded portion of the O P A D liability is, is roughly thirty million dollars.
Thirty million, that's what I thought I heard, okay.
Thirty-two point eight, thank you.
Okay, now, we have seven years, i- if I understand what you said, we have seven years to...
No, that was the pension plan that you had seven years of funding currently. Uh, give me, give me one second, I can tell you.
How long do we have to, uh, get rid of the O P A D liability? Okay, we carry it forever?
In theory, you can carry it forever.
Can you?
Um, now, and this is the, I guess, if, if you will, um, di- humor me for a second. I want to, uh, expand on this whole idea of pension reporting versus how Gatsby got to where they are today. The original pension and O P A D reporting was basically done on what I would term a good citizen model. That is, that you have somebody who starts today, who's going to work thirty years for the city and then retire. And the idea was, is to say that over that thirty years, the municipality would be a good citizen and put money away such that really, it's never really a liability because you're never going to have to come out of additional pocket because you're gonna do your funding accordingly. And that's basically how, and that's why the funding model and the accounting model were effectively the same, uh, under the old rules. Unfortunately, uh, not you guys, but other municipalities and other governments, especially, you know, e- even within the state, while there's a number of governments that are in trouble, we don't have near the problems that if you look at what's in Illinois or what's in California. Uh, you know, I was in a meeting this morning, we were talking about California and this whole cost-sharing model of reporting the liability and how there's municipalities that they won't be able, that, you know, as soon as they do this, they're going bankrupt to get themselves out from underneath this liability. So as a result of that, what Gatsby kind of says, wait a minute, we no longer have this idea of good citizenship. Now what we have to say is we have to book the liability as if, you know, as, to match what it is that the funding is. So in theory, if you fund it appropriately and you're able to look in the crystal ball and get everything right, if you fully fund it, you never have a liability. Now, there's ebbs and flows with, you know, estimates and how that works. So you can end up with an asset, you can end up with a liability, depending upon where you are in your funding model. Um, and so, you know, kind of with that, in theory, the only requirement that you would have is to, to fully fund that benefit when it comes due as the plan sponsor. In the event that you do not do that, potentially, you know, you, it'd be no different than not paying your, the B G and E or the, whoever the power is, or, you know, utility or your payroll. Uh, any number of different items would subject the city to, of course, lose its, um, credit rating status as well as, you know, bond rating and so on and so forth, uh, as, as well. This whole bomb rating item, we're not anticipating any significant changes. The, you know, the, the information's been in the statements, they've known about it. Uh, they go, the bomb rating, they go through and it, and their item is more so, do you recognize that you have an issue? And secondly, do you have a long-term plan to deal with it? It's not an item to say that, you know, in a single year you can fix pension, you can si- fix O P A D, but rather to say that you have a long-term plan that when these liabilities eventually come due, you're not having to find new revenue streams to fund an old promise.
And we have been making O P A D payments and contributions, unlike some jurisdictions. We've done it.
I understand that.
I'll get into some of those numbers here in a little bit. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Seymour?
And, and I close, our contact information's in the back of the, uh, presentation. Please feel free to give any of us a call at any time if you have any questions or anything you think we can provide additional information on, you know, uh, you know, while, of course, we do the audit, but during the course of the year, we always make ourselves available to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We often get asked, where does the money come from, where does it go? Well, for the governmental activities, um, I have a couple of pie charts here to show you just, um, where that money does come from and where it goes. Uh, governmental activities include the general fund, C D B G fund, special rev- special revenue fund, uh, funds that are ti- typically supported by, by general types of, uh, revenues. Governmental activities for fiscal year twelve are a major source of revenue, of course, is property taxes at sixty percent or twenty-four point one million dollars. The next highest source of income would be our charges for services, and that's at twenty percent or eight, eight million dollars. Uh, the next highest would be shared taxes at three point six million or nine percent. That number has come down significantly over the last few years as we see, as we have seen the economy, um, decline. The state has reduced its revenue, um, distributions to the local government, um, and to the county government. Uh, fiscal year twelve's personal property tax revenue did decrease by eleven percent over fiscal year eleven. Fiscal year eleven was at twenty-six point nine million. The December two thousand and ten triennial reassessment, um, is the reason for that decline. In fiscal year thirteen and fourteen, we're expected, um, we're expecting personal property taxes to remain fairly flat. Uh, the homestead credit has helped to effectively smooth the effect of the economy on the real estate tax base. However, in fiscal year fifteen, we are expecting additional decreases. We'll get into that a little more in depth during the budget retreat that's coming at the end of the month. But we are expecting probably five to eight percent additional decreases in fiscal year fifteen for, uh, real property. Now, on the expenditure side, the largest portion of our expenditures is, of course, for public safety. That includes our police, our fire, code enforcement, signals, things like that. Next highest would be our general government services at nine point six million or twenty-four percent. General government services include our administration for the city administrator, finance, human resources, things like that. And then the total expenditures for fiscal year twelve were forty point five million dollars, and that included our C I P or capital improvement projects. If you wanted to look at this information in the financial statements, you would, uh, turn to page sixteen, and you would be able to see it there. Now, from the business-type enterprise, uh, activities, uh, those include our electric fund, our water fund, wastewater fund. Primary sources of revenue, of course, for those are charges for services at eighty-eight percent or forty-nine point four million dollars. The next highest revenue source would be capital grants and contributions. Those typically come from developers for larger, uh, infrastructure improvement-type projects or capital improvement projects within the water wastewater departments. If you look at the revenues versus expenditures for the business-type activities, our, our policy does require that those funds be self-supporting. And for fiscal year twelve, total expenditures were fifty-four point four million in fiscal, I'm sorry, total expenditures in fif- fiscal year eleven were fifty-four point four million. They decreased in fiscal year twelve to fifty-two point five million. It's primarily due to the winding down of some of the larger C I P projects in the water, uh, fund and the wastewater fund. But as you can see from the chart there, uh, all of the funds were, were pretty much self-supporting, supporting except for the electric fund. They did lose some large, um, customers in the electric fund over the last couple of years with Meredith as well as, um, Gold Bond, Good Humor. Uh, with those leaving, they, they did have, um, significant decreases in the revenue. Funding levels, um, unfortunately, unfortunately for us, we just had, uh, C biz here to discuss the police and fire pension plan. So some of this you've already heard. Our accrued unfunded liability at the end of fiscal year twelve was twenty point nine million. Um, our total cost for fiscal year twelve was about one, one million dollars. At the end of fiscal year twelve, we had no net pension obligation. What that means is we contributed one hundred percent of what we were required to contribute. Um, he also mentioned that our funded ratio is forty-six point eight eight percent. And again, that's a function of the fact that our plan is relatively new. It was developed in, established in nineteen ninety-eight. So as that plan gets older and ages, we should see that funding ratio, um, move on up to one hundred percent. Our target is actually eighty percent, so we're, we're on our way, we're not quite there yet, but we're, we're working towards it. Uh, the Maryland state retirement and pension system, the city contributes one hundred percent of its required contribution each year. And in fiscal year twelve, our required contribution was one point six million. That covers, um, anyone who's not included in the police and fire pension plan, of course. Now, for other post-employment benefits, the end of fiscal year twelve, our accrued unfunded liability was thirty-two point eight million. Um, our annual O P A D cost was two point nine million during fiscal year twelve. And during the last four years, um, we have fully funded our annual required contribution. In fact, um, the first few years, we, we contributed too much, which created an asset for us, a net O P A D obligation at the end of fiscal year twelve of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, um, which is an asset for the city because it was pre- overfunded in fiscal years two thousand nine and two thousand ten. The plan's funded ratio was four point six six percent. Again, it's only four years old, it's very new when compared to the police and fire pension plan. So it'll take us, um, probably another ten or twelve years before we get to a number close to what the police and fire pension plan's at. Now, for the general fund, um, if you wanted to see the financial statements for that, they typically begin, I'm sorry, the budget and actual financial statements begin on page sixty-seven of the, uh, CAFR there. Total revenues were about point four million or four hundred thousand dollars below the final budget. Uh, the variance primarily resulted from personal property taxes being lower than expected, and that's attributed to the downturn in the economy. Our expenditures actually were pretty close to what we had budgeted. By keeping overall expenditures for departments in line with or below budget, we have effectively, um, managed vacant positions. Total expenditures were about forty thousand dollars under the revised budget for fiscal year twelve. At the end of fiscal year twelve, we did have a, uh, deficit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenues over expenditures. This was due to the one-time payments to employees that was approved in December of two thousand and eleven. It was a planned use of fund balance. It was anticipated that we would have a deficit as a result of that for fiscal year twelve. Without that planned use dur- during fiscal year twelve, net income would have been about sixty thousand dollars. At the end of fiscal year twelve, our fund balance was, unreserved fund balance was seven point eight million. That's down from seven point nine million in fiscal year eleven, and it's a kind of a reflection of our expenditure cuts. As our expenditures have decreased over the years, our unreserved balance has decreased. But in the reverse of that, because our expenditures have gone down, we are seeing that our, um, fund balance as a percent of, I'm sorry, our expenditures as a percent of, unreserved fund balance as a percent of total expenditures has actually increased. It's twenty-two percent at the end of fiscal year twelve. The city's current policy is ten percent or one point two months. Uh, G F O A does have some best practices that the city follows, and that's the Government Finance Officers Association. They do recommend, and this kind of answers Marty's question from earlier, they recommend that we maintain an unreserved fund balance as a percent of expenditures of sixteen point six seven percent, which is two months. And you, as you can see, we are at two point six months or twenty-two percent, so we're doing a little better than expected. Both Moody's and S A P, S and P, our standard emporers, clearly indicate that the strengths for the city revolve around our fund balance reserves, our fiscal policies and the size of our tax base. So it's important that we focus on those things and diversify our revenue base as well as increase our assessable base.
And if I could, on that page, when you mentioned that without the one-time, uh, payment, we would have been at a sixty thousand dollar surplus for the year, that's on a general fund budget of just under thirty-six million.
Yes.
Which is a reflection on our finance department and our department heads in terms of how tightly they manage a very large budget with a whole lot of unpredictability to that budget with weather and other issues. So just wanted to acknowledge their efforts because living with the lower revenues from the recession, things are very tight. And, and that's an awfully close budget, isn't it? When you talk about sixty thousand on that size of a budget.
Very close. I won't go into too much, I won't go into any detail really about the statistical section. I just wanted to point out some of the pages that we, uh, get asked information about the most. Uh, statistical section does start on page ninety-seven, it's at the very back of your, uh, financial statements. The direct and overlapping property tax rates is on page one oh four. That shows you how much citizens in the city will pay, uh, for direct city taxes, county taxes, state taxes, and how much of that overlaps and what their total tax rate would be for the, uh, living, being a resident or a business owner here in the city limits. Principal taxpayers are located on page one oh five, and then the principal electric fund, uh, payers is on page one thirteen. As I said, the electric fund's revenue base has gone down a little bit, and you can see where some of the principal electric fund payers has decreased there. And do you have any questions for me at this time? I think that's everything I have to present, um, other than I'd like to mention that all of our documents are located on the city's website and the finance department, the comprehensive annual financial statements, the budget document, as well as the popular annual financial report, they're all located out there.
I'd just like to congratulate, uh, Michelle and her staff and the rest of the city staff for not only a thorough financial report, but an unblemished financial report per the reviewers, and, uh, also a timely financial report, which is a major achievement as well.
Thank you.
Indeed. I'd like to second that.
Thanks.
Well, let me just ask you one question as a follow-up there, and this is kind of a tongue-in-cheek question. Could you do that with the stock market and our investments?
Maybe next time.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Well, I do also want to echo all the praise. I think guys have done an outstanding job and appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just preface our next item agenda by saying that there have been a lot of discussions in the last year about, well, even longer than that, about how we revitalize Hagerstown, how we bring economic development and growth to our city. And there's been a lot of discussion about building a stadium as part of that effort, and there have been a lot of discussions in public and not in public. And the group that we're about to bring to the table today has, this is not the first time that they've met with city officials, but I really wanted them to come before us here in public to hear what they have to offer. But please know that there is in no way, by bringing them to the table, is there any, necessarily, any commitment on the part of the city council at this point. But it's to generate a discussion about what kinds of planning efforts we need to take into consideration as we look to develop something like a master plan to put the stadium or any kind of large developmental project like that into some kind of context. So with that, I would like to welcome the SORA Development and Hobson Enterprises' folks to the table, represented by the distinguished Mr. Bruce Poole.
Doesn't get any better than that, or it won't get any better than that.
We get the distinguished version today?
Yeah.
And if you would just introduce all the folks you have with us here.
Yes, and I thank you very much for taking the time on this. We've been working since May of two thousand and twelve steadily, and I'm encouraged, actually, not only that the team is here, but that I look out and see so many people who have approached us from the business community, taxpayers, citizens, people that make an investment every day in downtown Hagerstown, who are clearly interested in the idea of redevelopment. And so I'm not kidding you when I say this is how I spent my summer, and this is how the team spent its summer coming up here. And we wanted to brief you today, now that you're seated, and tell you what we've been doing. So we have a slide projection to run through, but I have here with me Dane Bauer, who I've known dating back to the Schaefer administration. Dane worked for Governor Schaefer. He actually knew Governor Schaefer back as mayor of Baltimore, so he was very familiar with what happened in the Inner Harbor turnaround. To his right is Tim Elliott. Tim is with SORA Development, and he, too, will be speaking about the projects that SORA has done. The reason I'm so encouraged about what SORA has done is their projects mimic what I think we would seek to do in Hagerstown. They're geared to circumstances that are very similar, and you'll hear they're in a number of jurisdictions. And then over my right shoulder here is Chuck Brawley, who is from Skanska Corporation. Skanska, I'm sure you know, is one of the largest general construction companies in the world. I've visited a number of their projects. They do beautiful work. I would encourage you to go down to Virginia Tech or to VCU or Johns Hopkins and see the just absolutely gorgeous work that they can produce, although I think they did the New England Patriots Stadium, and so we're not sure. We're going to reserve judgment on how we feel about that site until Sunday. We also have Rob Hobson here, who is a principal with SORA Development, and he's been very instrumental, not only in bringing financing to a number of projects in very tough economic times, but also developing a fantastic book of business to bring private enterprise into areas for investment purposes. Melissa Schmidt.
She's over next to you.
Ah, the woman in charge here is going to try and keep us on time. She's got the clicker in hand. And if I missed anybody, I think that's our group for tonight. Okay. So with that, let me start. The reason that we developed a team was back in May of last year. There were discussions about what would happen as to whether a baseball stadium would be built in downtown. I was invited to that meeting. It was actually over at the Bulls and Bears area, and there was a presentation that was made, and the challenge was put out to try to bring private enterprise. The first call I made was to Dane Bauer because Dane works with DMW. DMW is an engineering firm that is based primarily in Towson, Maryland. They've got a presence all over the state of Maryland. He then connected me with SORA Development. And SORA Development, as I say, has projects that specialize in turning around downtown areas that are in real need of revitalization and particularly towns that have universities tied to them. And they, in turn, pulled us to Skanska. Skanska has a direct relationship with SORA. They do a lot of work with SORA. And again, they also are tied not only to urban redevelopment, but also to the construction of different sports stadiums. So with that in mind, we brought them up here, and it was interesting, the first thing that happened, you know, we brought together the team that you see there as well as others, the first thing that happened, the initial discussion was about building parking garages, and it was a very rainy, ugly day. And it was just, we had more and more depressing news about the city of Hagerstown. I frankly take it very personally because I think, like you all, you hear comments that are now negative about the city of Hagerstown. I get around, I go to Baltimore a lot, I go to Annapolis a lot. There was a time when Hagerstown was seen as the next big thing. Now, we are often the butt of jokes, or we are really the sort of the subject of abject sympathy, and I frankly get angry about it. So that's why we started working together. This group has people who have formerly served in the governor's administrations, who have worked with county executives, who have worked with the city of Baltimore and other municipalities. They've got a great understanding of the state budgeting process. They have a great understanding of the Maryland Stadium Authority and the process that is needed there, and particularly with SORA and Skanska, they understand what it takes to bring business into downtown areas and to start to get private dollars invested. Next slide, please. So what did we do? Well, this slide only begins to tell the tale. I couldn't even count the number of meetings that we've had up here, but I will tell you that I made some notes. We did have meetings with the former mayor and some members of the council. We met with city staff on numerous occasions. We met with chief representatives. We met with local business leaders. We've had discussions with Meredith Health because Meredith is very interested in redeveloping the old hospital site, and to our minds have been very positive as to what they see as their need and their role in the future of downtown Hagerstown. We've met with state and local elected officials, meaning the delegation, and also county commissioners. We've had some discussions preliminarily with Board of Education members. We've talked to people from the federal government who have interest in bringing support to downtown Hagerstown, Hagerstown redevelopment. We had our people go through the planning directives that had already been suggested by the city. They, of course, read the Ripken Study. They read what had been devised by some of the other private groups. Greater Hagerstown had put together its scenario as to what it would see. So they took all this into consideration. They met with representatives of the Chamber of Commerce. They looked out at baseball sites and options relative to a baseball stadium. They looked at parking studies. They looked at transportation considerations. They looked very long and hard at the fact of the University of Maryland system being placed downtown and the unique opportunities that are there. They considered opportunities for student housing. They looked at placement of Board of Education. They considered senior, a senior center being placed in Hagerstown. They looked at healthcare options for areas in the East End. They considered financing mechanisms for all this, and they finally considered transitory housing for various businesses that could come into Hagerstown and support the other businesses that are already here. So it was an exhaustive effort. And the upshot of all this is, their conclusion is, we could be a resounding success. Hagerstown could return to greatness, and there is a pathway for it. And ultimately, what we're going to suggest to you tonight is that you consider a public-private partnership with this team. At the end of the day, obviously, the decision is yours, but I do at least want you to hear from these people because I think they can tell you that they have had success in other towns that will show you that it can be done here as well. With that, I want to introduce you to Dane Bauer. He is with DMW, and he can tell you about some of the projects that DMW has had direct success with.
I'm currently the senior vice president for Daphne Kuhn and Walker, which is a well-established Maryland firm. It's been around forty-five years. We have offices from Frederick to Ocean City. But I'll tell you the unique thing about, they call us a boutique land development firm. I'm not exactly sure what all that means. But what we end up doing is focusing on projects and clients that are difference-makers for local communities and for local governments. I'm going to share a couple examples. We have clients like General Growth Properties, Copt, Cordish, Beazer Homes, Nuttelli, and all of these people have something in common. They want to take a vision and make it happen, and to do that, they have to have driver projects, and they have to have partnerships with local governments. This is a job that we did for General Growth Properties downtown Towson that's made a completely change over for local businesses and the look and appearance. We did the Towson Town Center originally, and we did the expansion project. Very unique. We brought restaurants, and we had to change parking. We had to do utilities. We had to work with different end-users and bring in people that had their own ideas and visions and merge it into General Growth Properties. The next project was, we are the engineer for the University of Maryland Medical System, and we work with Mark Wasserman and his team, and we're doing the new hospital on Easton on Route fifty, which will be a big change project for the whole Eastern Shore. As you know, a lot of the lower Eastern Shore counties, when they get really sick, they go to Baltimore, to Hopkins, or University of Maryland, and when the Bay Bridge is crowded with, you know, with traffic, they can't get there. This is going to be a high-tech medical campus. It's two hundred acres. We did all the feasibility. We did all the analysis. We did the engineering, the stormwater, the road systems, or state highway improvements, and we work with architects, and we work with Shore Health's model and the University of Maryland, and it's going to be a huge difference-maker project for the Eastern Shore. This is Johns Hopkins. We do a lot of things for Johns Hopkins University, but nothing to them is more important than lacrosse. We did the lacrosse center project. We also did the biomedical engineering school for them. They have various campuses off Homewood that we did work for. We did a lot of recreational facilities at the Homewood Campus. And this, again, was a showpiece project, a place of special destination. A lot of public and private-type interest in this project, in this location, and private funding. And then the last project that we want to talk about is Quarry Lake, an award-winning project in Baltimore County. It was a reservoir that resulted from a quarry, a spent quarry. We worked with corn companies on a vision plan. There were a lot of different type investors that wanted to do something here. Psalm Smith Barney has one of their headquarters offices around the lake. It has five hundred and sixty residential units. It has two hundred and some thousand square feet of business center. It's got a hundred and twelve thousand square feet of commercial. But again, we did all this through various partnerships, which we're going to get into in the next phase. But I think we need to hear from Skanska and SORA on their complementary projects that work with our background and experience.
So we've got Chuck Brawley. And Chuck, if you could talk about the slides and give a general explanation of Skanska.
Sure. Chuck.
Oh, thanks, Lou.
Thank you, sir. Chuck Brawley, senior vice president with Skanska. And for those of you who aren't familiar with Skanska, publicly traded company on the Stockholm Exchange, been in business for one hundred and twenty-five years. Is this working? There you go. About a third of Skanska's revenue is in the United States, so about twenty billion dollars worth a year globally, and about a third of that in the U.S. And why we're excited to be partnered with this team is that the complementary skills, we feel as though we have a lot of resources and capabilities to bring to the table with respect to aiding the designers drive the greatest value solution, certainly the construction expertise, and to come alongside SORA if the situation is appropriate as co-developers as well. So we're, in summary, a very large company that doesn't feel like a large company. We have great resources and capabilities, but that only means something if you can bring it to bear and serve your customers. So construction is and will be a local business. You know, I'm in the local office here in Maryland, and, you know, we're very excited about participating in projects that help advance the local communities and improve things for all of us. The next couple of slides sort of highlight some mixed-use experience as well as sports experience. So you can see that, you know, around the country, whether it's in New York, or whether it's in DC, Washington State, or Boston, Mass, a great experience with working along with developers and working along with public institutions and public entities to create mixed-use facilities that improve the community for all of us. The next slide really highlights some sports experience, and, you know, if there is a component of the redevelopment that has to do with the arena, we thought it would be important just to highlight a little bit of the sports experience that Skanska has, you know, ranging in things from the Regency Furniture Stadium, which is a job we did with Peter Kirk for one of his teams, Melon Blue Crabs, to the new Giants-Jets Meadowland Stadium, as well as the stadium up in Massachusetts that a few of us will probably be watching a game this weekend play that. So, you know, in general, it's really a privilege to be partnered with this team. You know, what we truly appreciate about working with SORA is SORA not only has the people that can come up with a compelling vision, but then they have the skills and experience to turn that vision into a plan, and then the access to capital and partners to turn that plan into projects. And that's what we hope can happen here in Hagerstown.
I'd like to introduce Tim Elliott, and he's just one from SORA. But I will say this, in the time that I've got to work with all these people, I've been impressed with everybody's capabilities. But the person that I keep getting back to over and again is Tim because he has an unbelievable mind and eye for seeing what is possible. And I did my own work on this, my own investigation. I went up to New Jersey to look at Glassboro. I interviewed people without anybody from SORA around. I asked the tough questions, and those people up there are extremely happy with what's been done. So Tim can talk to you about not just that, but what else they're doing in other cities as well. Tim?
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'm honored to be here at Hagerstown. I think with our work for SORA Development, we are out of Towson, Maryland. I am working in six cities, very similar to this, and we are collectively working to put together about three-quarters of a billion dollars' worth of construction in towns collectively like this. What I say is we're back to the future. Hagerstown, when you look at it, I'm in three cities a week. We are, and I'll show you some of them as we move along, but usually what happened was, there were, as Bruce mentioned, there were glory days in the past, and for whatever reason, we have gotten where we are. And one of the visions we need to put together is how do you collectively put together the assets of what's here and what this region represents? Each, if you've seen one development and one downtown, you've seen one development and one downtown. And I'm in many main streets, and this particular project, what you see up here, represents, I think, very similar to Hagerstown in that it is a forty thousand population town. It was on a main street that was right over here, and main street was decimated by a boulevard called Delcy Boulevard, and that main street was, my term, destroyed by big boxes that came on the outskirts of town. And the big boxes took all the retail out, and what was left were check cashing, liquor stores, and one diner, and a bunch of derelict houses. Um, and a bunch of derelict houses in a grid that was really not collectively doing anything for an asset growth of the town. And so I wanna, Melissa, if you could switch to the next slide quickly. You see this? This was acres and acres and acres of this kind of product. And what you can't see is this, I always say, in every town, I measure whether I can do a great job by the cushioned couches on the front porch. Generally, we, we see that in a lot of towns. Um, and generally what you're seeing here is the exact spot after we purchased twenty, ninety-two properties and collectively put three hundred and thirty million dollars of investment across from a, a rapidly growing university. Um, each town, as I mentioned, is unique. We don't have a downtown university in Hagerstown, but you've got a lot of assets we can talk to later. But if you go back to the other side quickly, Melissa, um, but one of the things is, um, we had to connect this university and the downtown. This, economically, we had this neck of the woods to the south was a low-income community and we had a university across the street here. We literally are bridging this town. And one of the things is we're looking at assets, clearly in this town, this is under construction now, a Marriott Courtyard Hotel. This is a residence community over retail. This is a student housing project. We are, uh, we are doing a twelve-hundred car garage and this is the School of Business. So in this town, the obvious asset and economic driver was the university. We merged those uses with private uses. At the end of the boulevard here, and I'm sorry I don't have this, this is a senior housing community that's going to come up. We're working with Kennedy Health System to do forty thousand square feet on the first floor of Wellness Center and we're doing a hundred and thirty-five units of rental senior apartments above. So we believe in back to the future of creating Main Street. We are putting together three thousand residents in twenty-six acres. This parcel here alone is bringing about seven hundred and fifty thousand in tax base to them when collectively this was two hundred thousand in aggregate. Right now, this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, these two are bringing about one point eight million in taxes a year and that escalates on three percent, uh, per year in a pilot agreement. Um, next slide, please. Again, as you'll see, when we try and do this, um, we need to really turn from here to here. Now, this was a complete reshaping. So this is a little different. Hagerstown, we're not gonna bowl over twenty-six acres and come up with almost, this is almost could be considered a greenfield approach. But if we go to the next slide, here, um, we are up in Durham, New Hampshire. Durham, New Hampshire is about ten minutes west of Portsmouth and Portsmouth is just like Annapolis. So this is ten, ten miles outside of that. And this community is not as dense. It's maybe twenty thousand residents. But in classic, this is their main street right here. And the main street, as you can see these slides, is basically nineteen fifty to nineteen seventy vintage single-story pizza pub alley for what is an eight-hundred acre campus across the street. I was asked to come to this town a while ago, um, two years ago now, and to help support a hotel. Every university wants a hotel. Every town wants a hotel. I can honestly say that the hotels are the hardest thing to finance right now in the world, bar none. You need about forty percent equity. Um, the equity requirement, by the way, on the last, our private investment in that was about thirty-two million to get that project started. In this case, you're looking at a five-building that's going to be about a ninety-five million and we're gonna need about eighteen to twenty-two million in private investment that we're putting forward. But when I was asked to come with a hotel, I looked at the town and said, it's not enough. You need to look holistically at any town and what are the assets that are the hidden gems? In this case, two miles out of town was a little quasi-public institute by the name of the Interoperability Laboratory. It was buried in the back of an old printing company and it was about thirty-two thousand square feet. And this IOL lab tests every cellphone that's in our pockets and in our hands for those corporations that go to market to make sure that when we point the device at a, in the future, a TV screen, I don't have to have this machine over there. I can have it on my device and I've seen this happen now, in three D. They're working there. Um, and so when iPad came to market, they worked with, um, um, Apple to bring the iPad to market to make sure that it worked with HP and Motorola and Samsung. So these world-class research ins- institutions were hiding in the back of a printing plant. I said, bring it to Main Street and let's see what happens. Let's bring a hundred and twenty-five jobs that were outside of town in the back of a printing plant. Bring it downtown and let's transform Main Street altogether from a sustainable, walkable community beyond pizza and pub for this town because there are lots of income folks from about twenty miles that try and visit, but there's no entertainment. There's no culture. And so I had to look at cultural assets. When we do plans, I have to make these urban parks because you don't do just buildings. You can't develop today a single-function building and get away with it. I don't, I don't know about you, but I haven't seen a lot of cranes and, and construction traffic. You know, we used to, we used to complain, I was gonna use another word for a minute there. We used to complain about all the construction noise and traffic, but boy, didn't we yearn for that. I could tell you in, in these kind of towns, these forty thousand older communities is where the cranes are because we all wanna get back to a walkable, sustainable community. And I think that's what we're developing here. We have a Barnes and Noble store here. There is a restaurant here. This is gonna be a Marriott Hotel here. There's a bank here and this is going to be a recreation center. So we created this to have these urban plazas because I needed to also drive things cultural like a farmer's market on the weekend to bring people. You can't do just a building at a time. We need to look at the assets, convince it, and bring regional drivers. Next. In this case, I'm gonna go to the next slide again, Melissa. Here is Greenville, North Carolina. There is a Vitat Health, much like Meredith's Health here, is a health campus here. They have East Carolina University here. And then here is a riverfront, the Tar River, and a twenty-acre park. And what you can't see close up are seven vacant blocks. This is a really troublesome divider called Fifth Street. There are nightclubs there that create more havoc than you could possibly fathom. There are cop cars there at two in the morning every night. Uh, there are all kind of gang, there are literally floods and crips hanging on Fifth Street. And so I was asked to come to town and figure out what can we do? Well, the first part was, okay, let's get rid of the clubs. And so what you don't see across the river is another small town. And I talked to the university of saying in the town, let's give them some real estate across the river. Let's move them out. And we will give that building to the club owner. And that worked. So that was stage one. The second step was to get this body of people talking to this body and this body having a march to the sea, as I say, and that's a tough term in the South. I'm sorry if you know your history. They didn't write that. So nonetheless, that's what it is. Waterfront is a, is a huge magnet. And so they have a twenty-acre green space and seven vacant surface lots to support this campus. And I said, it's a ridiculous waste of real estate. And so next, if you can go back, this is what we're creating. Here's the campus. Here is the residential community and some of the poor housing stock that's existing here. Again, with the corduroy couches on the front porch. This is the Fifth Street corridor we're talking about. So I'm doing a direct here. And what I wanted to do at the end of this corridor is create a, a vision of an inner harbor, if you will, overlooking. This slopes down. It's, it's twenty acres of an ugly fairway is what it looks like now, but there's a beautiful river and no functioning going on. I could see a day where we have, we are putting together a plan now of creating shops, retail, entertainment here on a veranda that overlooks. If you've been to the Charlotte Airport, you've seen kinda rocking chairs overlooking the airport there and it's very successful. We wanna create a front porch or back porch to a community and that's important. And we're moving the university's Performing Arts Center. I'm doing a senior scholar institute here, which is basically a senior housing, but, you know, I've done four hundred senior housing projects in a former life for a, uh, architecture firm I own. And seniors are a vital, important element in any community. If you haven't looked at your stats, you know that in ten years, it's gonna be a third of your population. They wanna continue learning and there's a great downtown need. They will not suffice for an outside community isolated in the all-senior channel. They wanna be part of a vital community and we oughta look to that here as well. There's a great opportunity here. Graduate housing, um, office buildings, parking garages. So we're linking this economic engine to the front and this park will be growth plan to bring the regional from, from the neighboring communities. Next. Next. This one is Rock Hill, South Carolina. There's a small university by the name of Winthrop that exists here and that's only six thousand. But they have a beautiful downtown here. And so Winthrop has a master plan to go here and there is empty space in between. And that empty space so happens to be three million square feet of burnt-out vacant textile mills. And at first I was reluctant to go to this town only because I know that cleaning that up and to deal with the demolition of that was a huge number. But, uh, this town stepped up and literally bought it, cleaned it. It sits now vacant for twenty-six acres and we put this plan to come together. What this town did was very interesting and it's exactly similar to here. Um, they put, they bet the bank on something. By the way, this town is located thirty minutes south of Charlotte. So it's a suburb of a growing entity down there and they're attracting, South Carolina has better taxes than North Carolina, particularly for business and residential. So they're, they're growing like a weed and we have this vision of connecting this neck of the woods with this neck of the woods. And, um, they, they bet the bank for ten years on sports tourism first, which is outside on the, outside of downtown on their Beltway here, which is a very small boulevard. They put together a, um, they've got the world's best frisbee golf course, if you can imagine. I've, I've never really thought that you could do an economic engine with a frisbee golf course, but they host tournaments every weekend. They call it the Augusta of frisbee golf. And it's beautiful. It's tremendously beautiful. They have a velodrome in downtown. A velodrome is a bike competition that maybe you saw in the Olympics where they have that literally open-air velodrome downtown with an office building on the side of it, which is tremendous. They have soccer fields that, five of them back up and they have tremendous, uh, support that on weekends, they do sports tournaments in the area. And there's fifty teams each coming in from the region with parents and brothers and sisters in tow that spend money. So having stated that, I said, look, let's take our asset of learning, let's take our asset of an existing downtown base and, but you can't see closes as a vacant trailroad track. And so I said, here's what we need to do. Let's get back to the future. Let's take a look at our asset. They were a textile mill. Uh, for a hundred years, many area cotton mills brought them here to get dyed and printed and the bolts were sent back to those factories. That has gone overseas and so it's vacant and shut down and demolished. But I said, let's get back to the future. Let's get and build the world's best textile research institute. So I'm working with the University of South Carolina System to create a new program to put a building to do textile research. Um, and at the same time, I know from Baltimore, um, we have, um, Under Armour that's there and there's Nike. And since they're so already bent on sports and well-known for it in the region, I said, why don't we do send like up in New Hampshire, that's bringing Microsoft, Apple, and, and HP. Here, we can bring Nike, we can bring Adidas, we could bring Under Armour and their research institutions here. So we're putting together that institution, we're doing restaurants, senior housing, um, student housing and the like. So what you're seeing here is, I've been to a lot of cities and the downtown that you have at Potomac Street, everybody wants to build. You are back to the future in reverse. Everybody wants to get to something to help build Main Street and what you have here. I could tell you, this is one of the better, best examples I've seen of, of what I can see as a, as a walkable, scalable, urban beginning. So the object here in this town is to find out what are the assets we can build together and build on that momentum. It's a lot easier than what you have than going the other way to build, bring bodies to build Main Street. You have a great Main Street. We just have to figure out how to continue to build on it.
Now that you've heard a little bit of what we each do and how we all focus on high-profile projects, we wanna tell you how a private-public partnership works. Um, and the kinda qualities that you need to have in the team that we've put together here. You have to have people that have done very large projects under very difficult situations because there's gonna be a list of risks and challenges and mitigating plans that you have to put together. And if you haven't been there before and if you're not connected with the, the public system and the various businesses in Annapolis and Baltimore and the people that you need to bring to bear from the state with funding assistance and seed money and everything, you don't have a chance. You can't go at this, and I, I've worked with, you know, the Schaefer administration and the Inner Harbor and the Charles Center and I worked on the Bainbridge project in Port Deposit. These are all public-private partnerships and that's the only way that you can do it. I mean, not that the public procurement processes don't work for their, for the things that they do. You have to find partners that believe in what you wanna do and have the ability to put it on the ground and fund it. Your role is to guide it and to steer it and to advise it and to monitor it. The list of capabilities that we have, we've worked for some of the biggest projects and the biggest clients, not only in Maryland, but throughout the Delmarva area in Skanska throughout the world. Proven track records, we have relationships with this governor, uh, we have relationships with the delegation, we have Bruce who has many different contacts. We've done many downtown projects. We help steer projects through public-private partnerships because many townships like yours don't really know what a public-private partnership is. How do you do an agreement? Um, I can tell you that I know Washington County has, uh, Vernon Thompson and I just happened to run across his path a couple of times when he worked in the Schaefer administration and he was one of the leading people to put the public-private partnership together for Bainbridge. The next slide, uh, I think we've talked about all this, the private capital. Um, you know, you, one of the things that we've seen in town is you have fragmented planning areas. And all this work that we've done for seven months, you had a stadium in town, now you're talking about a stadium out of town. You've got Meredith's Health that's got an individual planning process of their own. Um, you've got a, a number of different business people down here, you've got different organizations, you've got chief. Everybody's got their own vision. There is no system in place and no, uh, development group, a master developer pulling all three of those things together. And I could tell you, when I used to do the capital budget for the governor with Art Hilson Rad, who's now at University of Maryland, and, uh, Delegate Cade used to be the head of the Procreations Committee, when I went down there to get fifty million dollars for somebody, he'd say, for what? That's a great idea, Dane. The, I, I'm not gonna fund the idea. Where's your plan? Where are the details? Where are the marketing studies that go with it? Where's the operating plan that goes with it? So what Tim and I are gonna talk about next together is, we think that you need investors like us to come in, take your ideas, have you set up a steering committee, have us do the planning that brings all this together. By the way, Meredith's Health is a planning partner of ours. We're, we're engineering a project for them now. Uh, we work with Joe Ross. He was the CEO for Shore Health. And Melissa and I worked with Joe for five years on that project down here before he came up here. Uh, he and his board are gotta be big players on this. Their property's important, but the other things that they may wanna do downtown are equally important. If we do citizen centers, if we do, um, if we do standalone, um, uh, medical walk-in clinics and things, they are gonna be key. The University of Maryland Medical System is gonna be a key. I mean, you've got, um, a, a, a university downtown that's a, a triad, but you don't have everything that complements it. You know, you don't have student housing, you don't have a student union building, you don't, you don't have some of the services that young people are looking for. You know, a lot of them wanna migrate immediately to IT businesses and tech centers and things. There are a lot of things that we've studied over this past year that you need to put together. And like Tim says, as soon as you start putting it together, the rest of the money comes. Local business, uh, investors wanna be part of the team. There's spin-off projects and I think Tim can share with you some of the spin-off projects that have occurred in, in Rowan. I think we wanna go through the public-private partnership and let Tim sort of, uh, guide us through how you put, how you, it, it's not a procurement. You get a group of private investors in a town together and you decide to do a plan together. You decide what you wanna build together and over the course of the first year, do you define, you define how you're gonna share the money. You know, a lot of times it's the capital money that's the biggest portion of it, but there'll be things that you wanna invest in. There'll be properties you'll wanna buy.
Yeah, the object here first off is to develop a vision. What is it that we can get excited at? And developing that vision is the trick. Um, you need to think holistically, outside of just downtown. What are our assets in the region that we could pull here that makes sense collectively that need one another to build on it? Um, when we work on it, we're gonna study existing assets clearly, uh, but we have to do a gap analysis. What's not here that make it a great, walkable, sustainable town? What are the things we need, not only from, from a, a infrastructure sense, but really from a function? How much office is, is real? How much hospitality can we really get away with? And then there's the cultural aspect, you know? It isn't just about the buildings themselves, it's the spaces in between that make every town unique. What are the cultural assets that make me wanna visit? And so we have to study that and what makes it happen. Um, up at Rowan, um, before I arrived, it was a smaller plan, but as we grew, we began to know that we had to build a one- we had to build a 1.5 acre park. Well, I can't tell you that it's not just for green spaces' sake. The park needs to be part of the play, as I say. When we began this project up at Rowan, it, basically, we had to function some, some things that happened. And in the first year there, we decided to make a space in, in one of the phases that we have an Italian festival, we have a farmer's festival, we have eight events a year as this thing is constructing. Much the way Schaefer did at the Inner Harbor, remember the park there, what's it called? Rashfield? They used to have all the ethnic festivals. The only reason he did it was to get people to understand that there's something happening downtown.
And to get them walking down there on weekends to see the progress.
And so we need to do that here in a plan. At Rowan, although it was not built out, we have seven of fifteen buildings up, we get five to eight thousand people per event coming to this town. And that helps you develop new frameworks so that retailers will come and say, you know, there's really something happening here. You need, you can't just come in and plop buildings down. You need to, to develop momentum as well as the vision. So we do gap analysis and create new drivers of cultural as well as economic. And integration of core development areas and planning, well, this is not a green field development, so we have to work together. What is the frame we're working in? Where is it? What are the holes? Does the city own some parcels? How do we acquire? When we acquired ninety-two properties, I'm not saying we do it here, we had to acquire ninety-two properties in nine months. And the way we did it there was, we got a, a bond issuance, revenue bond by the city of twenty-two million that they voted on based on their plan. We had a guaranteed buyback plan, phase by phase, and a phase redevelopment plan. And so we also agreed that we would buy that regardless of whether we were building or not. So we had to have some of that in escrow. So that's how we moved in that project. So the next thing is agreeing on goals and objectives. One of the goals isn't for these outside teams to come here and take all the glory. We have to promote local businesses that are already here and developers. If you'll see in the vision where we did it at Rowan again, the garage, that's twelve-hundred car garage, and it's eighty-five thousand square feet of office and academic space in front. We decided to step back on that project while we're the master developer. That one parcel, we worked with the town to select a local developer, and it's a local developer there by the name of Nexus, and Nexus is putting the investment in for that garage. We did the initial design, we set the design parameters for everything, and so we have to deal with that. Partnering with a master developer team, that's an issue here that we got to deal with. You are not giving us money to go ahead and do this and, and, and giving us the capital to spend your money. That's not what we're asking here. What we are asking is for your partnership to create a vision and to create regulation that allows us to operate, because some zoning things may not make sense. So we have to look at this in operation. When we arrived, clearly, in many of these towns, they're one-to-two-story, three-story towns. I don't ever want to propose a, a, a high-rise in downtown. It's, you know, we can, but we, we need to understand that it really walkable, sustainable projects are where we got to get to. And so sometimes the zoning regulations may be in our way to do it, because a height restriction only allows us to go forty feet where I need to go fifty-five feet. A density needs to be developed differently in different parcels, so we go in that way.
I might interject you, typically what happens in these is that you have a vision plan that you share, and you have the connectivity between the different areas, the different core areas. You have drivers though. You have to have catalyst projects and drivers, like he's defined in these other areas, that bring the, the local businesses together, that bring the outside investors in in the beginning. When you do that, the master developer, in order to get the thing kick-started, usually works on the first two or three projects to get them on the ground, because that's what's going to bring everything else in. And then they promote all, all these walkable events, they promote different agendas where local businesses can get together, they bring other businesses in. And out of these, you get spinoff projects that grow. At that point, the master developer sets the standards, much like I'm the president of an HOA Association, the Architecture Review Board. So they set the concept so that everything fits it, so nothing can become a hodgepodge after that. Other people are doing them, but they're setting the standards and the guidelines and the protocols, all in keeping with an advisory committee that you set up and control.
If you go to the next slide. You know, when you develop a master plan, you don't build it all at once. There are constructibility issues, financing issues, what makes sense to bring bodies downtown first, and so we'll work on that on a phasing plan. When we do that, we'll, we'll, we'll get into determining risks and methods for mitigating them. Meaning, up at the Durham-New Hampshire project, the IOL. Right now, we have a little bit of trouble because the IOL has such high cost for square foot to develop, their ability to lease it at twenty-six dollars a square foot is constrained. So that was a risk that was kind of in the way for us. And so Thursday, I go to the Senate Office Building, the two US senators are working with me to find funds to put, because we're developing high-tech, we can, we'll have a meeting with the National Science Foundation, who will put a grant in to help bring that square foot lease down, to move them downtown because they believe in that. They also are, because of that, we, and I'm obliging and I love it, it is bringing a hundred and twenty-five jobs to that town. And the way we do it is, is thirty percent of it is an incubator space that take and transfer that tech to private firms, that we're going to build now a third floor on top for that space. And that's where the National Science Foundation is going to. So you understand the risks and the methods, you work with your elected officials, both federal, state, local, to make it happen. Next is putting the funds together for the first phase of the project, that's obvious. One of the issues here is an advisory committee. We, you, you cannot do this devoid of an advisory committee that's all the stakeholders, not just this body here. But you've got to have key people in the community, whoever, executive of Mack Truck, other community leaders. We have an advisory meeting, we establish that in all our towns, we meet once a month with them. I meet once a month with the council, and I meet once a month with other major institutions in town that may be becoming part of the project. I don't know what that is in town here. But in my others, for instance, University of New Hampshire with the IOL, who's running that, is on the advisory board up there. So communication is key. We will run a website through your website so that the community is kept informed step by step. I tell them what's happened, I tell them what's coming up in the next sixty days, and we discuss it. This is a very open-door discussion. This isn't, we're coming in secretly, we're going to build all these buildings. When you do a public-private partnership, and, and, and people think of these, they call it P3, you know, a public-private partnership, the fourth P is public, for heaven's sakes. I mean, this is their tab. And so therefore, they need to have a say, and so we'll work with charrettes at the same time of showing, this is what we're thinking. I've had charrettes on the public park, I've had six of them, on what we should do in the acre and a half park. And it was a lovely time of what, what this public wants to do and how, at the same time, we make money on it, and how it pays for itself. Town can't just put an acre and a half in there, we're going to mow it, we're going to plant it, and just, hey, we have a wonderful green space. The idea is, what are some income generations that happen in that park that help pay for it? And then we develop a special district on the boulevard that has a special tax to it down the road, once the businesses are, have reached saturation, and we can move in there. So that's that.
Take the run to the end.
And with that, Bruce.
Back to Bruce, yeah, quickly, because I want to get to questions. The summary, I think, is pretty, pretty evident. It is a, it's a team that's well-experienced, well-versed, and ready to move forward. People come into town and make project proposals and everything, and you hear all these different things. At the end of the day, I'm here, I'm invested. My family's here, my, my law practice is here, my law partner and I, you know, have our neck on the line every day, so to speak. My wife and I own some rental properties that we fixed up ourselves. We're here, we're not going anywhere. What I want, I want a place so that if my son chooses to come back to Hagerstown, he's got a place he wants to raise a family. He's fourteen years of age right now. I got to tell you, people don't talk about locating back to Hagerstown, they talk about going to Frederick or Annapolis or someplace else. I'm not ever going to force my son to come back, but I want him to, to have the circumstances so that he's pulled back here and, and certainly gives it every consideration. And I want that for everybody else's family. So where do we go? Well, look, I mean, first of all, you all have to think about this, you're a deliberative body, you've got a lot of things to consider, but if you like what you hear here, I would suggest that you authorize representatives for the city to sit down, have a discussion with us, detailed analysis about getting into a public-private partnership. And ultimately, what it means is you'd have to have a master developer agreement that would specify what we do, what you do, what the obligations are, what the timeframe is, how we go forward with developing the vision and then implementing all this. Now, the General Assembly is in session, that is a reality, they're only in for ninety days. At the end of next session, the term is over. I can tell you, the people in Annapolis need to hear something. You don't need to pick us, I would tell you you should, but I will say this, time is of the essence. You've got to do something, I submit and report to Annapolis, get the process rolling this year. That's it, and with that, I'd like to open it for questions and answers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a comment. We're all products of, of our history. And during my history, I had the privilege of serving with some great governors in Maryland, in Maryland, and I think among the greatest of them was William Donald Schaefer. And the thing that sets a great governor apart from just any regular governor are the people he gets around him. And I think that was one of the greatest things that William Donald Schaefer did, was get some of the finest people in the world around himself. And during that time, I had an opportunity, because I served on sixteen or seventeen legislative committees, to interact with a great number of the people that William Donald Schaefer had around him. And Dean Bauer was one of those people. Dean and I had hundreds of contacts when he was with the Schaefer administration. I was always calling on him to solve some problem, primarily in Hagerstown, Maryland, or Washington County, but some of them were state problems. And he was a great man, he did great work. You can take what he says to the bank, can depend on him. And I appreciate this presentation today, and I think it gives us opportunities which we really need to take seriously.
Appreciate that. I'll tell you one thing we did good together, we got money. We got lots of money funneled to Hagerstown. We built a new treatment plant. Mr. McGahey was here, it was considered one of the most successful grant application projects in the state of Maryland. He got more money for gallon of treatment plant that we built here than, than any other person in the history of the state of Maryland. And Don and I had just a little bit something to do with that. And we got a lot of money, I think Ron Bowers was the president of county commissioners at the time, and we had interactions with him, and there was a lot of teaming, but I agree with you, it was Schaefer's vision. And, you know, he bought me this do-it-now sign, and he put it on my desk, and he says, that's it, that's your motto for the rest of the time you're working here. When there, when there are issues, people go to the departments. When it's a real problem, I'm going to tell them to call you, and if it goes bad, it's your fault. If it's good, I did it. But we, you know, we did a lot of good things together in Washington County.
We did.
Went well beyond water and sewer. Well, this, this is an unusual opportunity. I've worked on many teams over the years. It's Bruce that brought this team together, if you want to know how the team got together. We had relationships that came together and people suggested that we get together. And then I found out that Don was up here, and of course, I've known your city administrator for a long time. And we thought that this is an opportunity where we can make a difference. If you didn't make a difference in the Schaefer administration, you didn't hang around too long. And I think the interesting thing is Mark Wasserman was the chief of staff. Mark, you know, is one of the executive vice presidents at the University of Maryland Medical System. And he has a very strong interest in Hagerstown. And the idea of some student housing, expanding some of the college, training medical professionals up here, working shop chum or relationships with Meredith Health. There are a lot of the kind of drivers and ingredients that Sura's talking about, they're here, we just have to pull them out and bring them together.
Mr. Mayor, this is, I think, the fifth time I've met with this group. Whether it was over a potential stadium or, or what it was, it was always about one thing, which is what this conversation has always been about, and that's downtown redevelopment. The first time we met, I was able to tell them they were behind the ball. We were negotiating with a group that came in a, a month or so before them that was purporting to put down fifty million dollars in private investment into downtown and build a stadium privately, and they were told, geez, you guys really sound good, but you're a month behind the game. And instead of packing up and going away, they said, well, if the other one falls through, we'll be ready to be there to discuss this. I have seen, over the last four months, immediately before the election and immediately after the election, a momentum in this community for downtown redevelopment that I don't think has ever existed before. While there's been a lot of consternation of how to do it, the one thing there has been is an agreement that it needs to be done. There are a lot of people who got behind the thought process that the stadium is the linchpin. Whether that is or that's not, it's not for tonight's discussion. But what is, I think, for tonight's discussion, is this need for us not to allow this momentum in this community to go away. If we do it, we will have lost something that may never be able to be regained in a long time. We have a choice between going the way we've gone in the past, and that's, let's discuss it to death, let's discuss the stadium, let's discuss downtown redevelopment, or we can say, let's, at least while we're considering that, pursue this, see what the next steps are. And there should be no misunderstanding, a couple of things have already come out of these meetings that I think we would be absolutely foolish to allow to pass to our fingers, and that is the potential Back to the Future again with Meredith Health. It is, goes without saying that this city has had a understatement contentious relationship with what used to be the Washington County Health System. They now have a new name, they're Meredith, there's a new council, there's a new time. And I know that this group, Meredith, is interested in not only partnering with Hagerstown, but becoming a partner in downtown. It fits in with the educational components that every single one of us have discussed in here. The other thing it fits in with the education is the medical component. These are things that haven't even been discussed before because the past administration centered on one thing, that, that I totally supported then and I totally support now. Whether that's the way things go or not, I don't know, but I think we need to make a positive statement that says, we want to continue to pursue this. And, and we really have one of three things to say tonight. No, we're not interested. Yes, we're absolutely interested in furthering this discussion. Or the Washington County way of doing things is, let's discuss it further and put it on another work session, and maybe by May, June, or July, when the summer comes about, we'll start having some decisions on where to go. And by that time, we will have frustrated our community so much in our inaction, it'll be inexcusable. So I, I totally support going forward. The last thing I want to say is in the meetings, and I want this to be loud and clear, you've heard about Chamber, you've heard about Meredith, you've heard about these organizations. It should be clearly understood that in the prior discussions I've had with this group, what they didn't mention tonight is, they have mentioned, and what would be an integral component, is neighborhoods first, representations from seniors, representation from people living in this community in the downtown, so that we never, ever face a situation again where people are saying, we weren't brought in on the front end, we didn't have a say in this thing from the beginning. And I think that's what we need to do, and I strongly endorse pursuing this.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else, comments or questions?
Well, we could go on all night, but...
Well, we could go on all night, but just two things right now. One is, indirectly alluded to this, there's going to be definitional issues in the scope of services of what you approach. We started off talking about downtown, the mayor. And I've always thought downtown and a lot of the brownfield and vacant industrial sites and et cetera, et cetera, that around the city are linked issues. But whether that scope is appropriate or not is something we'd have to discuss. I mean, we're already discussing a lot of those properties in connection with the stadium possibilities and other possibilities. You brought them up and raised, yet they're not downtown. So it might be near, but they're not. So I'll just throw that out, the scope of service issue and how to link that. And bringing some of these groups, neighborhoods first and so forth, of course, that's surrounding downtown. Second thing is, you seem to have universities as drivers in most, if not all, the towns that you've worked in. That's a major driver. States put resources into those. Those are stable. And while we have fledgling educational institutes downtown, we don't have near the scope of a major state university like you have in Towson, Glassboro, and the other places you talked about. So you mentioned drivers. The whole way through my campaign, I talked about my idea of drivers. You know, I'd be curious, in the end, we don't have to answer it now, where those drivers are developed from. You know, we haven't brought forth in the local community. We haven't found them outside. I know what you're talking about, but talking about them in the abstract is easy. Finding them and who they're going to be, that's a real issue.
I can tell you.
And we don't have that big institution like these other towns have.
Tim can answer this, but I can tell you, the people that I've worked with for years in the public and private sector who have an idea that works someplace else, which is what you're getting to, you can't take that idea and put it in a different community. Each community, it has to come from the grass level up. It has to be from an analysis of the business climate. It has to come from the, you know, the opportunities that you have already here, which you've talked about, the things that are good about town. How do you build on them? One of the things that people are trying to fit into these downtown redevelopments or these multipurpose centers, I think I told Don, it was convention centers. Now it's multipurpose centers. Whether or not that's something that fits in here or not, but I'll tell you what they are. They are a mini-convention center. They have skate rinks. They have restaurants. They have banks in them. They have everything. They have indoor soccer. It's sort of a center where people can come for multi-purposes, to do almost anything. They seasonally change. But there are certain things that are there always. It's places for people to congregate. I'm not saying that's what it is here, but I'm telling you, we've looked at everything under the sun. You know, when we knew that the stadium was something that may need to be someplace else, we immediately started looking. And Tim's been looking at the things that he was telling you about, the other locations, that would be different drivers in this part of the location. And we've mentioned a couple, but there's others.
Yeah, before Tim speaks too, I just tell you, Merediths, for instance, surprised us by saying candidly that they have a need for worker retraining. Let's get them down here. I mean, if we can do something like that, man, that would be a blessing. I can tell you that we've had several businesses talk to us about their interest in locating businesses with fifty or sixty employees. Wonderful. I know the Board of Education has said now, well, maybe they're not interested in the city and coming down to the city. But, you know, I would say, let's get a conversation going there. You just never know until you really sit down. We looked at different businesses, for instance, like Mac Volvo, that are constantly bringing people in from overseas and elsewhere. You know, is there a possibility of locating part of their need here in the city? I mean, there are all sorts of things like that that can happen. And I'll tell you one other thing before Tim speaks. This guy Vernon Thompson, I know as well. He is a very dynamic individual who worked in the Schaefer administration. He's wired with DBED. And he, I'm not sure if he's still under contract with the county EDC.
I think he's doing some advisory economic development work for the county. But you may want to talk to him too.
Regardless of what you do with us, you ought to get a hold of Vernon Thompson because he's a guy that, just like this guy, has a big, thick book. And that's also what you need, the ability to know people and constantly size things up and figure out where pieces go.
Well, and he's developed public-private partnerships from the public side for other communities. You know, it's worth coming in and talking to him. However you might pursue it after that is a different story. But I've worked on three or four of these different things, three of them in the Schaefer administration. And he was a key part of all of them, him and Mark Wasserman. So if he's available and if he's already in this county, it'd probably be good to have him come to one of your work sessions or something and have him tell you how these public-private partnerships end up, you know, spinning out.
I would like to report that Mr. Zimmerman, Mr. Listichan, and I actually took a little tour today with Mr. Thompson. We did a windshield tour around Hagerstown to look at various economic development opportunities and inhibitors, actually. So anyone else have any questions or comments?
Well, I just, the final comment, I don't want to monopolize, but it's, as much as I respect what's been said and I've heard all you've said and I've met you all before, it's due diligence for communities to interview a number of firms when they do something like this. And by the way, my old supervisor was director of Housing and Community Development in the Schaefer administration, Jaquon Rogers. Yeah, so probably remember her. So despite that, so, yeah, yeah.
I would say this to you. You know, we've had people who've said, they sort of floated out in the shadows. And they said, "Well, we've heard what you're doing and we have an interest too." My frustration has been, where have they been? What are they doing? What are the specifics? And I understand your need to do due diligence. But this is what continually frustrates me. As we see business after business close, we have these groups that want to sit out on the sidelines and constantly talk about all these great ideas. They haven't done anything. And I'm very, very attuned to that because I see so many of my friends' shops getting ready to close up.
I suggest there's something in between. What typically happens when you find somebody who's invested seven months of time in something like this, and you have some support from the local government and some support from the local businesses, what you usually do is take it to the first level. You need to negotiate and see what kind of a deal you can get out of a group like this and what the draft of an agreement would be. What are the different models that we would present to you? And you take it to a certain point to determine the viability of it from your perspective. You know, does it have all the ingredients? Does it have all the protections? Does it have all the risk mitigators in it? Do they have the right funding that they're going to put into this thing? You know, does Tim have a plan that works that you all like? Because it takes a little bit to get through the negotiation on the master developer agreement. And since you've got somebody that's here who's willing, you know, there's nothing that says that you're committed to sign at the end of the day, but you might as well see what the agreement might be and what you get out of it.
Mr. Alchar.
Just a couple of points. The first is a reiteration of a comment that I made on, I think, our first meeting here. And that is one of transparency. I am glad that that issue has been addressed here this evening and having this group come before us in a public setting so that the citizens hear real time what this council member is hearing real time. I think that is paramount to building community support for any project and one in which I felt we utilized successfully when we did the Bulls and Bears A&E parking deck. I think that that worked well from the outset. In addition to that comment, what I said that evening was, there are going to be other entities, as you allude to, such as Chief and Greater Hagerstown and Chamber and folks. But those folks need to maintain an understanding that it is this body that makes decisions on behalf of the citizens of this city and the investments that we will make on their behalf as it relates to public and private investments. So I just want to make sure that while I certainly understand they are key to our partnerships in making our community successful, they need to understand, you know, that this elected body is the folks, at the end of the day, that answer to the tax dollar that we collect. The next point that I had was, and I said this a bit during the election process, and that is, for better or worse, what we have done as a community over the last ten to fifteen years in our downtown, as things have failed to succeed, is we have invested a lion's share of our effort and energy and time and money into education. It seems to be the thing that our citizens are in most need of and have a desire to most gravitate toward. I see the university downtown and the school for the arts and the library coming and making the decision to put the county offices here in downtown. And there's other type of governmental functions that I deem culturally, educationally important. I still believe that that will be the biggest bang for the buck for the long-term sustainability of this community and this specific downtown, this specific community over time versus a stadium. That said, I also believe that tying our East End and those two or three hundred acres of what I would call neglected, you know, overused property to that process as key to whatever we would decide to do. And so for me, I just see East End as an area for a broader scope of development and downtown as an educational hub for the community. What I believe that government's role is in that process, as I said during the campaign process, was two things, infrastructure and services. The governmental function, its most primary function, is to ensure that its infrastructure is adequate, is functional, is well-maintained, and that its services are appropriate for its citizens' needs. So that's sort of the role that I would see in that sort of public-private partnership process, just as I saw the city's role in the A&E deck and the Bulls and Bears development, being our role of constructing the parking deck to make that area of private business thrive, so to speak. It's our role to invest in an infrastructure. For me, and I think this is probably the uncomfortable conversation that a lot of communities often don't have, and that is, we need to reinstate this notion that we are a destination for private investment and not a destination for public subsidy. I think that is one of the key factors that make many communities fail. And I think that's a message that we need to send loud and clear in every effort that we would take, in whatever entity we would choose to go along with in a type of redevelopment process.
Let me pick up on something that Lou said. And I agree with Lou's comments very much. And Bruce mentioned this too. Between Bruce and me, we have almost fifty years in Annapolis. We know how it works. And frankly, if we don't have a responsible proposal to the governor next September or before, it's not going anyplace. If we need a million or two million dollars to help with this thing, which is not unreasonable, I believe that Frederick got eleven million dollars out of Doc McClellan when they built the water over there. You remember that, Bruce? Eleven million dollars he brought home for the water projects in Frederick. And many of the Montgomery County towns got lots and lots and lots of money for projects downtown. But we need to get started on this. And we need to get started on this quickly because things can't happen until we have the plan that the mayor talks about and have these things rolling along. And I think we have a unique opportunity here. This issue of downtown has been talked to death almost half my lifetime, maybe more. And it's time for us to move on and make something of what opportunity we have. Can the city of Hagerstown do it? Hell, no, the city of Hagerstown can't do it. We barely can find two dollars and ninety-eight cents on a good day. So we have this opportunity. And I'd sure like to see us move along as quickly as possible.
I concur in answering Councilmember Baker's concerns, which I totally understand and he and I agree almost a hundred percent of the time. And I don't disagree now, but I think the answer is, if there's somebody else out there, if there's another group out there, I mean.
Call me.
Call. We're all here. And we put these folks on the back burner. I mean, we didn't tell the first group that approached us that, hold on, there's another group coming, so we're going to stop all these discussions. And not only that, but this city staff spent a solid eight months on doing this. There is only so much time and energy that city staff can devote to this one project while we have professionals here. So I think the consensus is that we should proceed with this group, I hope.
Can I make one comment?
Please, I was just going to say, we haven't heard from you, Ms. Nye.
I would. That's all right. I was sitting back, taking it all in. Counselperson twice before. This is without a doubt the most realistic plan I have heard. I like the fact that if you get it started, guess what? We can still make money in the process. This is what I've always said, and Bruce can attest to this. We have our parks, okay? The parks is for the public. But why is it that we can't still have something over there to bring money in to help support those parks? And I'm told, but that's not the way. Your concept is wonderful. And I just hope that maybe all entities can get together but realize that this government is the one to say finally, okay, this is what can happen. We don't mind sharing it with anyone, but please respect us. We are the elected body. But it was a very good presentation.
And if I could just close, because I know everybody's kind of ready to move on to the next agenda item because we're a little behind. But let me just observe that I think Hagerstown has had for a very long time a collective low self-esteem. And I think we have tended to think pretty small. We've been very reactive to our economic circumstances or to companies leaving. And I think that it is high time that we have some kind of vision, a shared vision, that's data-driven, that we can go forth with to not just do one project, but start to tackle many different areas of need throughout the whole city. So I appreciate your presentation today. And I'm sure we will follow up with you, Bruce and I, in the next couple of days to figure out what the next steps will be.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. If I could just ask, Mayor, before we end, is do we have a consensus among the council for staff to continue working with these folks? I think we need to.
I've heard three people say definitively yes, but I appreciate your point. Do we have?
Well, continuing to work with them, I have no objection to working with them. But I'm just saying, you still aren't laying it against anything, as much as respect as I have. And we'll still need to get much more specific than we were here.
Absolutely. Walk away with it, you don't like it.
All right.
I will say this, your timing. The delegate Cade story.
Senator Cade.
Senator Cade. It was, yeah, he would have got me for that one. You had, the time would be very well spent to get this organized in the next ninety days.
Right.
Spend the summer coming up with a real plan. Because when you get a real plan together and get the local buy-in and local business people part of the plan, we have to develop a financial plan. Because when you go to the legislature and ask for money, okay, if they're going to invest twenty cents on the dollar, whatever they're going to invest, they want sort of control over the whole operation. In other words, they want to know that the plan is sustainable and it will work. If they put, you know, twenty million dollars into something and it's a hundred and twenty million dollar project, you can't come down there with, "We want to build a stadium downtown." You have to come down with all the meat on the bones. But if you do, I can tell you that this group collectively has more chance of getting that money. I've never seen a team like this tied with a group of people that have worked together for so many years to do this for other projects. You can get the money if you set the stage. That's what you have to spend the time this year doing. And getting the commitments from the local team on their capital investment and matching it against whatever you think you can get in grant money. Without it, I don't think you're going to be, that's why I think whoever made the suggestion, you got to get planning money this year. And, you know, however it's matched with the team is a small thing. The key thing is to get them primed for us to come back in the fall next year and to set the stage for a productive budget session next year. That's what you want to spend your time doing this year. We've talked too much.
That's all right. I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Very much. Really appreciate your time.
Thanks, everyone. Pleasure to see you again.
Good to see you.
Good job, gentlemen.
Can you discuss timing and agenda and where we're at? Only because it looks like we're what, almost an hour behind? And the only reason I bring it up, I don't know about everybody else, but if we stayed an hour behind, we're going to adjourn at almost nine o'clock. And I have no. And I have no problems with that, but if that's the way we're going to go, I'm going to have to recess myself for at least a half an hour to get some food.
Okay.
Because I just, with my medicine I take and everything, and I have no problem with it. I just want to make sure that if I... And this is a timeframe which I could probably leave for and come back for shortly if that's what we're going to do.
Anyone else have any thoughts?
Whatever you want. Which of these are the most time-critical, Bruce? Are they all, do we resolve these tonight?
Item number five, that was a follow-up on your discussion on November 21st when the mayor and council discussed their priorities.
But that's one we could do another night.
We can push that back. There's no time urgency on number five. Number six is the project we discussed last week. There's some timing there, but...
That doesn't look like it would be a lengthy agenda item.
Number seven is one where we would like to get that one wrapped up with you just because it's important to get this sort of improvements underway if we're going to move forward with that. The MELP discussion you know about, so...
The MELP discussion, what?
You know what that's about.
I know what it's about, yeah.
Follow-up and so however you want to handle that timing-wise.
See, if we could get a number where Lou could stay and then we could adjourn.
I think number five, if you want to push that back to your February work session, if that's the preference.
How about number six? Is that crucial?
That's up to the mayor and council, how you wish to respond to the...
Just push six back, five and six back. I think the majority of people want to move five and six back, honestly.
We have agreement on that, so we'll defer items five and six.
Six, six. Mr. Mayor, if we're going to work any harm to what's going on, Bruce, can we get away with putting that off for a week?
Well, it's what you discussed last week. You wanted to discuss whether you were willing to sell the property, and if so, then you were going to advertise.
It's our internal discussion, you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, there's people waiting to hear back from us that have contacted us.
If I may, on item six, we have an extension and we believe we could push it out another two weeks, so we could go and defer work.
Okay, thank you. We will dispense with items five and six and put them on another agenda.
Thank you.
So we will now proceed to municipal stadium improvements. Now, we're only 15 minutes behind.
I appreciate it.
Wow.
No problem.
Bruce says government inefficient.
That's right.
How's it going, everybody?
The only thing I don't like about number seven is it just, you just cringe about putting money into it, but at the same time, they're going to be operating there for two more years at least, right?
I'm fine with seven. Kristen says he's fine with seven.
I'm fine with seven.
The one thing to that point is 75% of that is structures that could be moved to other places.
I was going to ask you, I wrote salvage on the memo. I wrote salvage, so you answered my question.
That's a plus in that.
Salvage.
Great presentation.
Right, so you could put a canopy over something else somewhere.
It's getting done all the time.
Yeah, that's necessary.
And you're following the terms of the lease?
Yes.
In terms of the $35,000.
And the fireworks nights, they follow the terms of the lease as well, standard procedure.
So welcome to the beard club.
That's right.
Everybody's growing beards these days.
Well, Roddy, here, real quick. Martin Luther King Day is next Monday. You just want to explain refuse schedule with the holiday.
Yeah, it's really simple. There's no change, even though it's a holiday. It's, the collection is the same night as it always is.
Just a heads up there.
Good job. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Good job, Kristen.
Good evening.
Now, we're back on track.
Almost. You lost five minutes.
I can do that, as we all well know. Fortunately, we were in receipt, January 9th, of the information.
I can't hear you.
Of the information that we had requested from the Harshman Group. They did supply us with nine documents. Some of them were not complete, but they are working, I understand, to make sure that they do get the information of us that we desire on that. I have them listed out. Do you want me to go through a quick review? I just did a quick synopsis the one night after we received them. Most importantly, they are requesting a $1 million request from the City of Hagerstown. We had previously had a discussion in regards to $750,000.
Just so I'm clear on the $1 million, what you're basically saying is the city would pay $1 million and the property would be rehabilitated?
Yes, sir.
Deconstructed, rehabbed?
Yes, sir. It would be green space at the end.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Our payment would be at the end. It wouldn't be upfront.
It would be at the end of the contract.
Right, I just think it's important to point out to the public because it continues to bog my mind that the city basically owned and operated this property for that duration of time, you know, essentially left it.
Yes, sir.
Was still certainly arguably responsible for its condition it was left in and has some responsibility to that cleanup and basically gets out of that process for about $1 million.
Yes, sir.
And when you compare that to sort of post-closure costs for things like landfills and other areas, which you have shared basically similar type of responsibility for, to me, that seems, that continues to seem like a very good deal.
Yes, sir. And we met this morning, Mr. Erner and Rodney and I, we're spearheading the review of all the documents that we have to offer comments back. And needless to say, we'll have probably a two or three comment period back and forth in regard to the documents. But when you just do a simplistic view of the cost that they have listed, it's $1.47-8 million. They purchased the property for $250,000, so they have basically $1.72 million in at that point in time. With our $1 million, if we so choose to be our portion of the funding, of course, leaves them approximately $720,000. Now, they have the salvageable sale of the material, which is factor X, is what we're going to call it. It's an unknown for us at this time.
Well, it's $1 million plus. We have sunk costs in that, don't we?
Sir.
We have sunk costs in that site, don't we? We do some other items, several hundred thousand?
Fence, $23,000 for fencing and preliminary lighting.
There was other work. Okay.
No, sir. We have a lot on ours.
All right. Will that leave it environmentally... Okay. Is it part of the contract that it passes all environmental tests?
Yes, sir.
In this process?
It'll be a provision within the contract.
Do we have any idea what salvage yields are going to be?
I do not at present, like, no.
So salvage yields...
We don't know the tonnage of what's actually left in the building, whether it's copper, salvageable iron, steel, there's different grades. We don't know the actual composition of what's in the building. So that's, once again, our factor X that we don't know.
And to me, if it costs us roughly $1 million to return that property to environmentally sound condition and they make $3 million on that refuse material, I would say, at the end of the day, we are still ahead.
And I agree with Kristen, and I will say this, there was a time when our city staff sat down in executive session with us, oh, what, Bruce, maybe five years ago, and gave us an estimate on what you thought it would cost. And all I can say, if somebody would have told us we could get away with it with $1 million, we would have been very happy back then. And I agree with Kristen. I think it's time. The only thing we need to do is ensure, is ensure that the money isn't paid until the product we get at the end. With regard to the salvage material, what I do know about it is while there may be a lot in there, I can tell you it is extremely labor-intensive to get it out. So it will have a large value, but its net value will be decreased by the labor intensivity.
First, I want to congratulate you on the written presentation you made.
Thank you.
Your use of underlining and all that stuff made it much easier to...
He underlined everything.
Oh, I understand that, Doctor.
Yes.
But my question is, essentially Dave Harshman is the primary contractor, right? He's the general contractor?
He will be designated as the owner. He and Dee Thompson, his partners in marketing. The general contractor will be like homing to the documentation we have, like homing construction out of Williamsport, Pennsylvania.
Do you have enough information from the general, the owner, the general and all the others involved that you feel confident that this is going to move ahead?
In an expeditious fashion, I think, is what you're asking.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Erner and I and Rodney have reviewed all the documents. There are some provisions that we need to work with, the money issue, and you've helped us solve that immensely. But with some of the provisions of the architectural contract that we have and the escrow account, I mean, we need to really do some discussion with them on that. And we, once again, met this morning. As soon as I receive the word documentation back, I'll put the next revision back for their review, so we will have that process.
I don't understand. I thought we were at $1 million. Where's the money issue?
The escrow is just how they're going to fund their portion of it.
They're going to fund their portion.
Yes, sir. And they had language in there that didn't match up with the initial settlement agreement. We just need to straighten that out with them.
I think we need to cap it at $1 million. It's been, just when I've been here, it's been $500, $750 million. That's it.
Yes, sir.
Because I...
Understood.
If I'm the other guy, I'm sitting around waiting, they'll go up to $1 million a quarter.
Understood.
I think it needs to be capped at $1 million, period.
Understood.
Well, we were talking about William Donald Schaefer earlier and his slogan of, "Do it now." I think the council would like you to follow that slogan.
Yes, sir.
For $1 million.
For $1 million, yeah, we're not.
Yes. As soon as I receive the documents, I will have them transcribed back to them, once again, and we'll continue to meet, the three of us, and then update you for how we're moving along with it.
Well, thank you, and thank you for what you've done. We've made a lot of progress since being sworn in.
Yes, sir.
And it's nice to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, you got what you need? You got what you need?
I got what I need, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
They crave. You know, these lawyers.
We are moving right along, and we're actually now ahead of schedule. But why don't we...
So quiet.
Why don't we proceed with the city administrators' comments, please?
None for me this evening.
Okay. Mayor and council comments? I guess I'll start to my right.
No, I have none.
No comments?
I'd just say that Mayor and I, I think, had a good time on, was it Sunday night, I guess, the Hub Cup, giving out awards, and it was a very nice evening, and very good, productive meeting tonight.
No comments tonight.
Mr. Alshar?
I have a, just a couple. The first is, I wanted to thank Rodney and Junior. I called them on Friday, and as a municipal staffer myself, I know you get a call on Friday and they're trying to get something done at 4 o'clock. But anyway, those guys were able to follow up on a question that the museum folks, or I'm sorry, the historical society folks had on the Hager House, so I was glad to get that response. And then the second is to thank Sergeant Robinson. I called him last night. This is an issue that's been going on for several months. What occurs is an individual or group of individuals goes street by street. Soon as folks set their recycling out, they go through the recycling, they take the aluminum cans out, and, you know, it is very clear to me that once a person logs on and becomes a partner, if you will, in recycle bank, that that recyclable material has a value of credit to that person and therefore is still that person's valuable and to the city because they have a contract with the hauler that has some estimation of accumulation of material.
We want to reduce reduction.
Right, and so, you know, for me, there is certainly, you know, a criminal aspect of it occurring, but I'll just say that, you know, my mom was the person that called me last night. I went out and located the individuals that used some explicit words to describe how they were going to continue to do it over her objections, and so thanks to the police for following up on that. The third is, I had a question from somebody about whether or not we were going to continue with the North-South, I guess, gridiron classics. I don't know.
Some vicious rumor that I was going to cancel it or something like that.
Hey!
I don't know where that came from, but it's completely false.
I'm glad we were able to dispel that rumor then. And I think that is all that I have for this evening.
All right. Well, I'll make some comments. First, I had the pleasure of swearing in my first police officer. Officer Eichelberger was sworn in yesterday, and I know we have a couple more officers, I think, joining the police academy, so I'm excited about him beginning his career. Also, went to the Hub Cup over the weekend. It was great to see old teachers and be back in the old haunts of North Hagerstown High School. And this morning, at 7:30 in the morning, I spent some time with about 37th graders in their world geography class, talking about citizen involvement and public policy. And I just have to tell you, really gave me a lot of hope for Hagerstown because we have a lot of very intelligent, engaged, enthusiastic young people and very smart, very good questions. You know, if we all had the imagination of a 7th grader, the things we could accomplish. And that's about it for me. So again, I do think we had a productive meeting tonight. Mr. Munson, you're just in time to make some comments.
Very briefly, I, on my way to the meeting today, I came past Northern, North Avenue, I'm sorry, North Avenue, and I noticed that there's traffic flowing again, and I wouldn't say that's a good thing, and I appreciate all the parties that made that happen so quickly.
All right. Well, we will now, with a, I think we should...
...for the purposes of discussing personnel issues. Target?
Thank you. Hear a motion and a second to move into executive session to discuss personnel issues. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.